Guys can go whenever you're ready.
Okay. Calling to order the regular planning commission meeting dated October 19th, 1920, 2020. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to COVID-19 pandemic. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. The planning commission and city staff are participating from remote locations. And all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by giving, going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At, at this screen, you can click on a tab to either watch or sign up to speak on a particular item. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign, sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker, signups will be allowed. So please make sure you're visiting malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and turn, sign up to speak. Recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. The applicant team for public hearings will have a total of 15 minutes to speak, including any rebuttal time. Members of the public will be afforded three minutes only. No additional time is allowed to be donated to another speaker. Commissioners, if you have, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our decisions clearer for the record and the public. Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Euring?
Here.
Commissioner Wile?
Here.
Vice Chair Marx?
Hello.
Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, Chris, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, let's stand. Do we need the flag up, right? Oh, there it is, thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, John.
Okay. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move the agenda as presented by staff.
Okay, I'll second that. I'd like to make some changes. And
Okay.
That will include continuing item 4A to a date uncertain, viewing item 4D to November 2nd, and to move items 5B and 5C before 4B.
What was your second, what was the second thing you did, John?
Continue 5D to November.
5D, okay, wait a minute. Got it, okay. Got it, got it.
And you want to move 5B and C before where?
4B.
Before 4B.
5D.
So we do the parking before we do the wireless?
Right, it's a simple item and we don't have to keep staff here late into the evening.
Okay, I'll go with that.
One other, one other quick question. On items 4B and C, I'd prefer to hear 4C because some of the content in there is a little better than 4B. But could we combine those maybe? Might that be easier still? And or could we combine 5B and C?
I think they're two different issues, Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, then could we at least hear C before 4C before 4B? Just again, they have a little better content on the signal strength in the 4C light up.
These are, 5B is.
I would, I'm only focusing on 4B and 4C.
You want to do it?
5B and 5C are the parking.
Parking.
No, he wants, he wants to do 4B and 4C. I like 4B first because I think that'll give us some groundwork for 4C.
Okay, but I'm talking, my motion included 5B and C, not 4B and C. So do you want to ask for an amendment to also reverse the orders of 4B and C?
I'll, I'll follow Commissioner Euring's lead on that. I'm, I'm good with, with 4B first if Steve's got a perspective on that.
And, and may we combine 5B and 5C, the parking?
5B.
That's up to Trevor.
Yeah, you, you, you can if you want. We just had to be clear that you're calling both items. Do we, Kathleen, are there a lot of speakers about one or the other between the two LCP amendments?
I will check.
The two parking items.
We do not have any speakers listed for either at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna amend that. We're gonna amend it to also add reversal of 4B and 4C. So I'd go 5C, then 4C, and then 4B. Is that correct?
Commissioner Euring, are you good with that? Or do you want to keep the?
Anyway, anyway you want to do it, I think.
All right, let's, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that acceptable for you, Jeff?
It was my motion. Will somebody sort of repeat it because I'm completely lost at this point.
Okay.
I, I think I have it. I, I think what,
Trevor, go.
I think what you're doing is you're, you're accepting the agenda proposed by staff with the two continuances to the date specified by staff. And you've also decided to move the two parking items to be for the wireless items and to be heard together. And then you have flipped the wireless items to have 4C heard before 4B. Does that reflect your motion, Commissioner Jennings?
No, I really, I, I would prefer not to flip the wireless issues. I'd rather hear the Civic Center first, but.
All right, let, let's hear the Civic Center first. I'm not, I'm not dug in on that. I see both.
So 4, 4B and then 4C.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept the amendments. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And we need a report on posting of the amendment or the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 9th, 2020, with the amended agenda properly posted on October 14th, 2020.
Okay, and we have no ceremonial presentations unless we're giving Bonnie a statue? Okay.
We should.
We should.
Standing ovation?
Either that or a bulletproof vest. Okay, written and oral communications with the public. Do we have any, any speakers from the public?
No one has signed up for that.
Okay. Planning commissioner comments. Steve?
I just want to say, Bonnie, we're gonna miss you. This is your last meeting, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Best wishes. Enjoy Florida. You've done, you know, it's been interesting working with you. I've had a good time and thank you very, very much for putting up with all the bullshit.
Hey, you didn't say that, right?
Anybody else?
Yeah, all right. That, Bonnie, it, it has been, it's a long time, really, since before that you were the planning director that we worked together. And I really appreciate the hard work and consistency that you brought to the planning department. And I would also congratulate Richard on his appointment and a very wise choice. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. David?
I second all of that and it hasn't been as long a time. It's been a short time, but it's felt like a very long time, but I can't thank you enough. Otherwise, I would not have been able to get through what I've gotten through to, to get to this point. And congratulations, Richard, and have a great time, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to add, Bonnie, thanks for, you know, the, the kind of extra time you've given me when I first got started here, you know, kind of like, okay, this is how it works, you know, you'll figure it out. But that, that extra kind of just, just effort, I really always appreciate it and reflect on pretty often. And I also just wanted to say, you know, I'm so glad to see Richard in this spot. I feel like this handoff is about the best I could imagine for, for where we've come and where we're going. So sorry to see you go. Glad to see you in the new seat, Richard. So thank you, Bonnie.
I would bet that the Tampa Bay double Rays are going to lose in three, in four.
Okay.
Maybe they'll lose in three, new, new record.
I'd, I'd also like to congratulate on Bonnie. I hope you're retiring. In Florida, I don't think they have many zoning laws, so it's not much work for them down there. And I really want to congratulate Richard. It's, it's been forever since we've had a local, local guy in charge who really knows the city and I'm sure, I sure hope it lasts longer than temporary. And it will be a big change and I think it'll be a really good change. And you both work real hard and, and so do we, but you work harder and we, and you have to put up with us, so, or had to. So relax. I also had a couple of questions and I was looking through the minutes and I, I understand on, on the eight, 17 minutes, Bonnie mentioned that a TUP would be granted to the farmer's market for parking. And I just wondered if that ever happened or what the process, what is holding it up? Because I went to the farmer's market very rarely, but I went this weekend to see the candidates and it's hard to park and you could see that the attendance is way down.
The, we, we processed, we specifically for the purposes of the farmer's market, we proposed an amendment to the zoning code that would allow for this TUP. However, the farmer's market has never come forward with an application. So until they move forward with an application for the TUP amendment, there's nothing we can do. The council has indicated that they would make the city's chili cook-off site available, but the farmer's market hasn't processed the CUP with us. It falls within.
Okay, and then
Who is the planner they should talk to to get that processed? Is there somebody they should? Who?
They can, they can talk to anybody. They reach out to me periodically. Fletcher Allen, one of our planning technicians has been a point of contact for them, so.
If I come and talk to Fletcher, Fletcher can help him figure out whatever the hell they got to do.
Sure, yeah, we've, we've had communication with them over the last several months or years, actually, and we just have the next step from them.
Okay.
Okay, and then Chris Marks a while back, and I guess Norm had asked about if there's any chance we can have public meetings in, in anywhere in the near future, in the parking lot or on the beach or whatever. Is there any progress at all in that?
The city council and city manager just have not had the comfort level to start having in-person meetings again. So I would just continue to monitor what the council does going forward because the commission meetings would be modeled after whatever the council elects to do.
Okay, again, thanks a lot, Bonnie. Anybody else have anything? Chris?
Yeah, I just had one more. I did want to say thanks to the, you know, fire departments for turning around so quick on those couple of emergencies we've had. And obviously with the winds coming up, just everyone stay on your toes. So let's hope we don't have any flare-ups with the wind.
That's it? Okay, we're on to the consent items. Did the public, oh Bonnie? I'm sorry, we forgot Bonnie's comments.
Sorry about that.
Her last comments, okay.
I just wanted to say a, a big hearty thank you to all the planning commissioners. You do so much work. You don't get paid and I know you care greatly for your duties and it shows in the, the depth of thought you give all of the projects that come before you. We don't always agree on everything with respect to the code, but we've figured out ways to move things forward and I really appreciate your dedication. I also want to say a big, big thank you to the planning staff. These people work incredibly hard. Kathleen is one of the people you probably know best. Kathleen is an unsung hero who does so much stuff behind the scenes as well as what you see or do on Monday nights. And all of the admin team and then all of the planners too are tremendously dedicated and go above and beyond and work really hard to try to bring you the best information they can, treat everybody fairly and, and work as efficiently as they can and under really challenging circumstances. Thank you to Trevor for all his guidance. I feel like I'm on a award show. It's been great working with Trevor all this time and more recently, Pat. You've got great advice and legal minds here and I, I'm glad that you take advantage of them. I wish Richard and everybody all the best of luck. Congratulations. And also thank you to the community who is so engaged and cares so much about how things are all the time. I will work hard to find something else to do on Monday night. For the last five years I've, I've been here every single Monday night for the most part, either here at city council, but I, I'm pretty sure I'll find something. I'll miss Malibu and I'll miss all of you. And thank you for everything. At this point, I'm gonna hand things over to Richard. He's gonna drive the, the ship from here on out. And so I just wanted to say thank you and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie, thank you very much. Enjoy yourself.
Yes, I will.
Yeah, I, you know, I just want to chime in too, you know, I don't, you know, everyone sees Bonnie on, on, you know, camera here on Monday nights, but they don't appreciate all the hard work Bonnie puts in weekends, late after hours. She's always making time to move all these projects forward, you know? And the depth of experience and the commitment and the, you know, the empathy that Bonnie brings to this job is, is gonna be, it's a huge loss for the city. It's gonna be impossible to replace, you know? I'm, I'm thrilled to work with Richard and he's, he's, he's a huge asset, but he has big shoes to fill here and you'll be, you'll be missed here, Bonnie.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
All right.
On that note too, I want to mention that my, my associate Pat Donigan will be with you tonight. I have to jump off this, but I wanted to step on there to to see Bonnie, Bonnie Swan song, but you'll be in Pat's hands tonight. You're in very good hands.
Before you go, can we have Richard's salutation here just to kind of kick things off with the full team? You got any, any entry words, Richard?
I appreciate it, Chris. No, I'm looking forward to working with you guys. You know, I've enjoyed doing this now for 16 years. So I'm looking forward to continue it in a different role and be a little more active in where we go.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, consent items. Anybody in the public pull any?
No one from the public has signed up to speak on anything, just applicants available for questions if anything's pulled.
Okay, I have a question for Patrick, and that is usually our minutes are, are 3A items instead of 3B items. And tonight we have minutes under 3A1 and minutes under 3B2. And I just wonder if that's an error or that's something new?
No, I mean, and, and Richard, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I believe the 3A1 is corrected minutes from the July 20th. And then the, the three, the, the, the other one is, is from a, a, a different meeting. So maybe there's no, there's no legal issue with that. I believe they're just two separate meetings, correct, Richard?
Yes, and I was talking to Trevor about this, Commissioner Mazza, Chair Mazza. And A or B, it's just a matter of keeping things organized. And he said there was no issue with the way they were labeled.
Okay, great. Does any commissioner pull anything on the consent item? Chris?
I did want to talk through 3B1 and I had a quick question on 3B2, which I think we could just get out of the way if you don't mind, John.
Well, we should approve the rest of them and then do the second. So we have a motion to approve 3B3.
3A1 and 3B3.
I second.
Okay, can we have a roll call on that?
Apologies, could you please repeat the seconder and the motion maker?
I made the motion, David seconded, I believe.
Thank you. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Chris, you have a question on 3B1?
First, a question on 3B2, if I could, it'll be faster. That's okay. I know generally when we get the A to BTS submissions, it'll have a kind of a, I'd call it like a working diagram or a rough diagram of kind of what the layout is, et cetera. Is that, was that purposely omitted or should we expect to see that in the future? Or any, any thoughts or observations on that for expectations going forward? And that would be to the planer on.
I believe that was, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but it wasn't supposed to be included.
I believe that it was an error in the printing because it was an attachment to the report. Yes, you should have gotten a copy of that site plan and approval stamp from our city's wastewater administrator.
Okay, and then also just for one more clarification, on page five of nine of the staff report, it's, it's attached. Item 17, it calls out a final OWTS design report. Is that document that's usually attached considered that final report? Or is, am I correct in stating that's kind of a preliminary? Just so, just also so I know kind of expectation wise?
So what you guys get to see as commissioners is you're seeing actually a, a copy of the, the conceptual approval from our city's wastewater administrator, environmental health specialist. The report is actually a report. It's a multi-page document. And that is something that is looked at in building plan check. We typically don't get that as part of the planning submittal.
Got it, got it. Okay, so in the future, we should expect to see that kind of basic plan, whatever we'll refer to it as. And this was just a miss on this particular app.
It's something with the, yes, it should have been attached.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with this.
One question on that also, Richard. Is there a house associated with this?
Yes, Philip can speak to that a bit more eloquently than myself. But yes, we did approve a planning verification for the reconstruction of the home with a 10% addition. And subsequently, they, they have applied to add a pool to the house as well as a spa and some decking.
Well, I, Philip, I noticed that all of these tend to be like 3,600 gallon tanks. Is this a large house or a small house or what is?
It's, they actually have a proposal for an, an administrative plan review for more square footage. They are, let me pull that up.
So we'll see it again?
Yeah, they do have a administrative plan review application with us. It's still ongoing. They are proposing more square footage and looks like they are at, they're proposing a 4,008 square foot home.
It's more than 10%?
Yes, that's, yeah, it's being approved. It was being approved under the APR.
So one, one quick question then, if I was looking at the proposed project description does not line up with what you just outlined, Philip? So is that anything we need to adjust before filing or it's, that's kind of normal procedure?
It's usually normal what the design report was or the OWTS was designed to accommodate the proposed square footage.
The larger.
So will we be seeing that project then, since it's over?
Um, no, it's actually administratively approved because it's not going over 50% than what was there before.
What? Where does that rule come from?
Yeah. We are in general using the, the guidance out of the LIP where if you weren't to increase structure size or if, say, it was more than 50% of the wall, is the walls were to be removed. And so if someone's adding, and Philip can give us the specifics because I don't know what this house was and where it's going. But if somebody is doing an addition that if they pretend that house was there today and they walked in and said, hey, I want to add 500 or 1,000 square feet or 1,500 square feet. If that was, met all the criteria to be exempt from a coastal development permit, we would allow them to have it administratively. However, if somebody is doing something that would have triggered a coastal development permit, we are bringing those to the planning commission. We're not allowing folks, even though they're fire victims, to be able to gain the benefit of avoiding a CDP had one been required.
Richard, here's the question. And I've heard three different stories tonight. One was a house plus 10%. It was a house plus some other number. Very strange.
Richard, would it come back as an a consent item?
No, because what they're doing needs the criteria for an exemption from a coastal development permit based on the requirements of the LCP.
So how big an addition are they making? Do we know? What was the house originally? What is it now?
Philip, the original house was 2,693 square feet.
And where's the new house going?
They are proposing to go up to 4,008 square feet. With an addition, that's, so that's an addition of 1,315 square feet.
Which is more than 50%?
It's more than 50%, yeah.
No, it's actually right below, under, under 50%.
Okay, and if we did not accept this, would it come back because it was, it had to have an OWTS?
Oh, sorry, could you repeat that?
If we did not accept this item and ask for a C, CDP review, would it come back?
Would the house come back or just wastewater system?
Well, the, the, we wouldn't improve the wastewater system, so the wastewater system has to come back with a house, right, Richard?
Correct.
So it seems like we're bypassing the planning commission.
I'm gonna ask Pat if he could step in on this one because my understanding is that since this is the reporting of a de minimis waiver, it's, it's not like a administrative coastal development permit. So I would defer to him on exactly what it is that could do with this if you wanted to see it brought back to you.
Correct. And so my, my understanding and, 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 you know, if, if I sound redundant from what Trevor has said, I do apologize. What's before you right now i- i- is what Richard just said, this, this de minimis waiver for the OWTS. If the, you know, if the findings, you know, if the planning commission, I guess this is, you know, does not think that those, that those findings are there, so be it. But I, I, I'm not sure from where I sit right now that, that I can, with, with the knowledge I have about the project, can guarantee no matter what, it's, it would, it would come back to, to the planning commission. You know, I guess I'm, does that answer your question or, or, or no?
No.
Let me, my question would be, how does the planning commission know that this qualifies for de minimis waiver? I mean, how do we know it's not two stories? How do we know it doesn't block a view? How do we know it doesn't have a side yard setback problem? Or a slope problem or a hillside ordinance problem or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? If we never look at it.
You mean the house?
Yeah, we, well, correct, but the, 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 the house is, is not what's, what's before here. It's, it's, it's the OWTS system, not that. Yeah, well, correct, but the house is not what's before here, it's the O W T S system, not that.
Right, but by approving the O W T S system, I think we're being told that you don't get to look at the house.
Yeah, the, let's go through it. The fire victims had a right to rebuild either what they had before or plus ten percent, okay? But then, the planning staff has said, look, if you had that house built, and you wanted to add a five hundred square foot garage, or this or that or the other thing, you could do that, because that would be incidental and exempt from getting a coastal development permit, alright? So those processes proceed under administrative plan review, which don't come before the planning commission. And that's all that's going on here. This septic system is being reported to us under the de minimis waiver provisions that were put in in order to take care of the problem, that many of the septic systems were going to be damaged, right? And, and this is something we worked through with and tried trying to figure out, oh, wait a minute, you don't want people having to come back and and get a full C D P, even though that's what the, what the L I P said, just because their system was damaged in the fire. So this de minimis waiver was a way to avoid the necessity of people having to get a full C D P. Secondly, the size of this microseptic tank, if you look at the other projects that come before us, this is right standard right in the middle about thirty, I haven't seen one that's been less than three thousand gallons, and this is right sort of in the middle of that. So what you're, I, what I'm sensing is a reluctance to to allow the procedure that's going on for a lot of people, including myself, in the fire rebuild process, and you're gonna, you're gonna take on this guy and say, oh, no, wait a minute, we're gonna have to change the rules for you, so.
I don't think I want to change the rules.
I don't think that this is something you need to be concerned about. If I were in your shoes, what I would do is, I am in your shoes. What I would do is I would approve the de minimis waiver, because this project is, is, this is simply a wastewater treatment system. And then go and talk to Richard and staff and get them to explain to you exactly why the administrative plan review process works and how it's being used in the context of the fire rebuild process. But to hold up this one simply because you don't understand that process doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, what I'm wondering is, it has been recent that we've been getting three thousand six hundred forty gallon tanks.
And that's what those micros.
And it's not been before the fire, we never got those. Now we're getting a bunch of them. And the question is, is this serial development? The fire victim gets a hundred and ten percent? Does he just roll into a hundred and forty-nine percent without us even looking at it? And by approving this, do we allow that to happen? Now, we have approved, we approved one on the colony that's much bigger than this house, that's half the size of the tank, so there's something going on there, too. I wonder if we ever have to look and see, do you need a three thousand six hundred forty gallon tank for a four thousand square foot house?
All I can tell you, John, is every one of these that I've looked at, these microseptic tech tanks has been right at about that size. Bigger than three thousand, I can't say they've been thirty-six hundred, some on thirty-five hundred, I don't know, but they've been well over three thousand each one, and that's been going on since we went to the advanced wastewater treatment system, which was before the fire.
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, Richard, can we solve this one, move along? Is there any way you could agree to bring this house back, so we can look at it? And let's go on to other items, and we can see what we got when it gets here?
It would be hard for us to bring the house, and Pat can speak to this as well, because everything that they're doing isn't triggering any of the, they're not violating any of the exemptions, I guess you could say, they're consistent with all the exemptions.
Nobody's asking, nobody's saying they're violating anything. What we've got is a question that says, what, what is going, look, you started off, it was a house plus a hundred and ten percent, then it moved to a house plus whatever, a thousand square feet. It's just, it's been out, so why don't we just solve the problem and say, okay, let's take a look at it, if this house comes through and is clean as a whistle, the issue goes away and we don't have to play with this anymore.
And I have another question, Richard, that is, we used to have a rule, I assume it's still in effect, that you can't have serial development. If you develop a hundred and ten square feet a percent, you have to wait six months before you go in for more. Now, and, and we used to have a problem with that, because people would build a hundred and fifty, and then they'd add fifty the next week. So is, why isn't this serial development?
Pat, I know you wanted to speak there.
Yeah, and so, you know, and once again, I, I must reiterate that, that I understand the commission's concerns, and Commissioner Yuri, I understand, you know, what your proposed potential solution was, but that's really not, not before you right now. The, this is a reporting item for a de minimis waiver. The really, the only thing that can be done tonight, and is whether or not that the, that the planning commission agrees. If not, then a full C D P would be required for this O W T S. There's not really much that staff can promise or guarantee, because we're, you know, if, if they're, as Richard said, kind of going by the book, we can't then treat them differently because of these, of these issues being raised.
So is there, is there a motion to pull this for a full C D P? To find out what's going on?
Chair Mazza, the applicant is available for questions, and they may be able to give you a bit more of an understanding on the size of the septic. And I just want to reiterate that, as Pat mentioned, these are separate issues here. This is the septic system, it's not the construction of the home. To the point that was raised about the serial development, one thing that staff does track is we are tracking what people add, the amount of grading they do, the amount of demolition they do, obviously demolition isn't part of this, but in general, the things we track are the additions, the demolition, the square footage, or I said square footage, but also grading, because those are all things in the L I P that there are limits to. And so, one of the things you brought up, and you're exactly right, we don't want somebody coming in one week asking to demolish half the house, so they could avoid a new house, and then come in three months later and say, okay, now I want to do this other forty-nine percent demolition, which, you know, that comes out to ninety-nine percent. So we are tracking cumulative numbers, and so, like as Jeff, as Commissioner Jennings brought up, we can also share the file with you. They are being checked for consistency with the code, and also, we're not letting, like I mentioned, nobody is gaining the benefit of sneaking past the planning commission. We are being very diligent about making certain that whatever we do complies with the coastal program. And to just arbitrarily tell somebody that I now need to make their administrative plan review a public hearing, I'm not sure I could do that, honestly, because I would be afraid of treating them somehow different from the rest of the folks in the city. And one of the things I want to make sure we do is be consistent with everybody in the city.
And Richard, let me just, I'm not saying anybody's trying to sneak past the planning staff. However, I don't know, a month ago, you came up with a proposal for a garage on Sweetwater Mesa that was going to be built on a one-to-one slope that the staff report said was, was in agreement with the general plan, the coastal commission, and ally. So there's stuff that happens, right? I mean, how it happens, I don't know, because I'm not on the planning staff. All I'm trying to do is figure out an easy way to get through this one, so they can get their wastewater treatment system in. We can answer John's question about what's going on with the rest of the house, and we can move on to the rest of the agenda. I'm just, the faster I can get there, the happier I'll be.
Jeff?
Yeah, well, if we're gonna, we're pretty far into the weeds already, but I think if we're gonna, having pulled this item, we need to have a public hearing on it now.
Well, I have one question, Richard, or actually, Philip. Was the one forty-nine percent calculated after the one hundred and ten percent, or before?
No, so when we add, when we calculate the fifty percent, it's by existing, it's not with the one hundred and ten percent.
It's existing prior to the fire.
Alright, correct. Which was that twenty-six hundred number you quoted?
I believe, I'm not. Like I said, the applicants here ask questions, I'm not assigned to the house.
Correct, and, and, and if I may, so, so I understand the, the, I guess the desire and inquiry for that, but what is before you, and if, I have to repeat myself, are simply the findings for the O W T S.
Right.
That is, that is what should, that, that's the only real thing that, that should be analyzed, so, so if the, if, if, if the reason to basically, you know, disagree with the de minimis waiver is because there is no, you know, there's no detail regarding the actual house, you know, I, I, I must advise, that's not, that's not supported by the L I P. The findings are there, in, in, in section B, it is, it is, you know, it is vested in, in this commission to, to analyze these reporting items and decide, it's, it's, it's kind of getting outside that scope to start saying, well, we're gonna remove it, because we, we're not sure what, what the house is.
Yeah, but to be clear, Patrick.
Finish this one, then I'll call on you.
Okay.
In this particular case, we don't even know where it is, because they forgot to put in where it is. There's no description. There's no diagram.
Of the, of the house?
Unanalyzable. No, of the septic.
Then, if that is, if that is the reason for, for, for the, for the failure to, to, I guess, confirm the de minimis waiver, that is totally, I guess, you know, within your discretion, and, and, and that's fine. Going outside of that and saying, we don't know what the house looks like, is not, is not necessarily supported by the L I P.
Let's go to Jeff's idea that says, either, you know, deny this tonight, and make, and let have, because we don't have the detail, and have Richard give us the, whatever report he's got about the size of the house, or whatever details he's got, and maybe we can do that offline, if we've got a problem, we can come back with that.
Well, just to be clear, and I, I want to address Patrick's question or statements directly, and that's, this is different than the other de minimis waivers we've had in front of us, because everyone that I can recall always has that, you know, rough description of the septic system, structures, et cetera, and it's not a full plan, you know, so, et cetera. It's a one pager. Without that one page, I'm analyzing and trying to make a decision on this with different information than I normally have, and I'm uncomfortable. And it's not that I want to hold this up, and I don't want to even bring into ques, I had no intention of bringing into question anything about the, the actual structure, but without that, I'm making a decision partially blind. So, and that, that's what, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Richard, I have one last question, maybe others have questions. We waive the fees on a hundred and ten percent. Are you charging fees on forty percent? And how do you do that?
If we are charging fees, yes. So if somebody comes in, and my understanding would be if they come into plan check and with something like this, they have to pay the full fees. Then you got to remember, planning fees for fire victims, for that planning verification is only a hundred and sixty-five dollars, it's not much. But when it comes to building permits, that's tens of thousands of dollars. And yes, they are being required to pay that, and we're also checking down to see if the property changes hands, to see if, you know, it's a new owner, in which case then we also have to ask for them to pay all of the fees we waived, because the fee waivers only extend to the property owner at the time of the fire. So we are being, we are watching that, yes.
So, John, if I can repeat my question, if, if we, can we, what would be the procedure if we do want to just have that one extra sheet, so we can make this decision here? You know, that's, that's what I'd be asking.
Jeff, would that be a continuation?
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, we continue it, and then, Richard, if you get us any kind of details that Jeff talked about, that would be helpful.
I'll second it.
And do you have a date? Richard?
Oh, I don't see why we'd have any issue with bringing this to you before the next meeting. And in the meantime, what we could do is perhaps, you know, we could meet with the commissioners individually offline and show them the project plans and how we're reviewing it. And that way, we can simply bring before the commission just the wastewater system, which is really what the permit's about. I don't want to cloud the de minimis waiver.
I got, no problem with that.
That makes sense.
Well, I have a question, Patrick. Is that allowed to have five different meetings?
I mean, provided it is informational only, and it's, as I said before, if it's a simple kind of explanation of the, of the process of kind of how that, you know, it's reviewed and created, yes, that's fine.
Okay, so, Richard, when do you want to bring it back?
I don't see, if it's just one page, it's really all that's missing, we could have this back to you guys, because this is a fire victim. We could have it at the next hearing, don't want to cause any delays.
And the next hearing is eleven, too?
Yes.
Okay, Steve, will you amend your?
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Motion to eleven, two?
Absolutely.
And who seconded, Chris?
I'll accept that, yes.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I have a problem with having a motion on this item without allowing the applicant to be heard, but if, if it's the opinion of council, we don't have to let the applicant be heard, then I will vote yes. What do you say, Patrick?
Um, you know, that is, as a, as a report item, I, you know, I believe that's at the discretion of the, of the commission. If you would like to hear them, that is, you know, I, I won't stand in the way, but typically, there's no, there's no mandated requirement of, of, of them to be heard.
Okay, then I'll vote yes.
Would you, you don't want to hear him, Jeff?
I can count to three.
Yeah, John, go, just keep moving.
Jeff voted yes to David vote?
No, we haven't gone. Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now you pulled three B two, is that correct, Chris?
Uh, yes.
Three B one.
Three B one, sorry, thank you.
Oh, okay.
And that one, I didn't think was a quick question, but I thought the last one was quick, so we should probably just treat this one like normal.
What does that mean, you're not going to pull it?
No, 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 it's pulled, but just if we just do the normal staff report, do we do disclosures or anything on, on these? This is just.
No, you're just asking a question, attorney, I'll challenge if we have to do the whole banana.
Well, I just was observing that this is, from the math I'm doing, this would be the, the first time that I'm aware of, where we go over five years. And I just wanted to see if there's any issue from anyone in the commission for approving for, basically into the sixth year on this, on this extension.
So let's, let's.
I don't have a problem.
And now?
Talk about it, I mean, let's, if we're gonna do this right, you got a whole item, you got a staff report, you have a public hearing, and you decide.
That's what I was asking for.
Okay, may we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Mazza. So before you, today, we have the extension request for coastal development permit, so I didn't have a presentation prepared, as this was on the consent calendar. I do have the property owner Alessandro Dizan and the applicant Kevin Poffenberger available. I see their names on the, on the list, so they're available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, I have a question of you.
Disclosure, Sean.
No disclosure. Oh, I talked to Richard about this today, reviewing the whole staff meeting.
Learned that. The rest of us.
And Jeff?
No disclosures for me.
Chris?
Notice, no disclosures.
Nothing here.
Yes, I went to the site and met with the representative for the project. Didn't discuss anything that wasn't in the report.
Okay, Didier, I have one question of you, and that is, the staff report said there was an extension request on eight seventeen, but the letter was dated eight fourteen and was not stamped received. And eight seventeen is a year and a day. So it is, it had expired. Do we have any evidence that was in on the sixteenth?
So the expiration that I'm looking at the database right now, the expiration that I have in the database is eight seventeen. I did pull the entire application, the time extension request, and the fees were paid on August fourteenth, and the date stamped is August seventeenth, so that would match the date that I have in the database, and still, it would have expired that day, however, they submitted on the seventeenth, so we were able to move forward with it.
Okay. I show in the staff report that it was extended on eight seventeen nineteen ninety, nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So a year from now is eight sixteen.
I believe we probably just did calendar date, so, because this extension would have them valid until August seventeen, twenty twenty-one.
Well, that's a question I have for Patrick then. Do you get three hundred and sixty-six days or three hundred and sixty-five?
So the, if the, I would say that the, the, that this, based off of, off of this staff report, the, 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 the city receiving it and, and accepting it and, and putting it on is, is, i- i- is evidence that, that, that they, that this permit did, did not expire. Um, I, 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 I'm trying to follow that, 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 that your, your, your question there, that, that you're saying that if it was, if it was extended from a year from August seventeenth, twenty nineteen, that means you only get to August sixteenth, twenty twenty? Is, is, is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I'm, I would, I would, I would likely have to, you know, potentially take a look at, I, I guess, maybe some supporting case law surrounding that. However, based off of the staff report before you and the fact that the city has accepted it and, and likely, you know, told that the, they told the applicant that, hey, that, that this is your deadline, that then the, the, the city, and once again, I'm, I'm just pontificating here in terms of, you know, I'm not sure if this is the exact case here, but the, the city would likely be stopped from, from then kind of telling the applicant, oh, whoops, you actually blew it. It was the day before, despite the city telling you this entire time that you had to August seventeen. So, so based on, based on what I've seen, that, 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 that this is, that this application for extension was, was timely made.
And I also would like to add, if I could to, that the sixteenth was a Sunday. And our policy as a city for appeals or anything, if something falls on a Saturday or Sunday, we always carry it over to the Monday working day. Uh, we would, like, for example, with an appeal, we would never end an appeal date on Saturday. We'd always move it to Monday when staff is here to accept it.
Okay, because we have a different policy than Coastal Commission, which counts calendar days instead of working days. But, okay, it's not a big deal on this one. I would caution that in the future, you should look at that because the Coastal Commission has ruled on this.
Who does that have to, went off the Coastal Commission?
Well, we, our staff, our staff on a project gave, gave over three hundred and sixty-five days and it was reversed. Um, but I'm going to drop that. So let's have, what are we, we ready for staff? We're ready for the-
Chris, have any more comments? Is Chris in?
Well, yeah, the, the, the only reason that I pulled this one was just in looking at the code for this section, the reasons that we have to consider, you know, again, I did want to call out, it is going past that five years. Um, so, you know, that, that's getting to kind of the, you know, past the limits of what's stated in the code. And then, um, one of the, one of the, uh, reasons for the extension is restricted access to property, to the property. What I'm interpreting, and I just wondered if, if staff could comment on this, maybe DA, um, just in terms of what's written up by the applicant's, um, engineer, it looks like. Um, his comment in the attached letter is that existing groundwater or de-watering well located on the, uh, OW- OWS location, that's part of the, um, you know, managed by the city's public works department. Has that fact been what has, you know, the basically is kind of the nexus to allow the extension because it restricted access to make changes to that part of their property?
That's correct. So the scoop of work is on Bayshore Drive, which is an easement. And so, again, the applicant is here to speak on the, the final steps. So the information that I got from them was that Public Works in October finally approved the easement. That easement document needs to be recorded, so we have it here with the city clerk's office, and that document needs to be recalled, signed by the mayor. So that is the, the last step they have in, before they're able to, uh, obtain the building permit. So although we are giving them a year, once it's signed up by the mayor, they can pull permits within a couple of months.
Okay, so in that, that restricted access to property is really what allowed this extension. So I'm, I'm good with it. That was what I wanted to clarify. So I, I don't have anything further.
Uh, Didier, is there a reason why you gave a year versus six months?
No, the applicant requested a year. Um, yeah, we, we just went with that.
Let's go with the year, John. Let's.
Oh, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna nitpick.
Yeah, and I'd move that we just receive and file, then I, I got my question answered.
Yeah, David has one last question.
Oh, I was gonna do, make the same motion. Do you want a second? Need to, want to receive and file.
Okay.
This is not a receive and file. It needs a motion, doesn't it? Because I don't believe.
I made a motion to move it.
I second it.
Okay, uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yurin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Chair Maza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so that's all our consent items. We are now on to item five B and C to be heard together.
Joyce, Joyce presents both of those, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so, sorry, can't, can't, oops. There we go, sorry. All right, so, um, what we're going to do on this is, I, I believe, were you guys, uh, were you, uh, was the planning commission going to open up both public terraces at the same time? Because I have one presentation for both projects.
Yes, we were.
Have you done that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was working on getting my, my, uh, video going. So, um, the item before you is consideration of two coastal development permits, uh, twenty forty-six, which is for the Corral, uh, beach area and twenty forty-seven, which is for the Zuma beach area. Next slide. Uh, project history, and this is on both projects. In January of twenty twenty, the city council, um, approved ordinance four sixty. And that established a new chapter in the municipal code that allowed, uh, certain, uh, areas in the city uh, to, um, have a restricted or staggered overnight parking restrictions. And with ordinance four sixty, uh, it was Las Tunas Beach and Malibu Pier. So it set up the framework, uh, where the city could apply for coastal developer permit, uh, in these areas, uh, to install regulatory signage, uh, that would, um, allow, um, the signs to be placed that would restrict parking essentially from midnight to four in the morning. Uh, in March of twenty twenty, the planning commission approved the Las Tunas Beach, a CDP. And then in September twenty twenty, the city council adopted a new ordinance or approved a new ordinance, uh, ordinance four sixty-nine, in which they added Corral Canyon, uh, beach or Corral Beach and Zuma Beach. And those are the two items that are before the planning commission tonight. So next slide. This is, um, let's see if my, yes, uh, so this is the project area for Corral Beach. The green shows the areas that have existing parking now on this exhibit, and then the red is the no parking areas. The area is essentially by the Malibu Seafood. Uh, you'll notice to the north is the, uh, RV, uh, Malibu RV Park. The west edge of Malibu Road is the eastern boundary and, uh, the eastern property line of two six oh four four PCH is the western boundary. The, um, this area does not include the area, um, uh, known as Dan Blocker Beach, which is, uh, further west of the, uh, single-family homes you see on, on this exhibit. Next slide. For Corral Beach, the CDP, um, is a request to install regulatory signs along this stretch of PCH. So it's essentially about two, or, uh, point, uh, six, five miles. And there'll be eighteen signs on the landward side, uh, side and twenty-seven signs on the seaward side. And so for the most part, um, there, there may be a few new, um, poles, uh, or sign, uh, poles. But for the most part, these will be placed on existing, uh, sign poles or on utility poles. Uh, the signage that would be installed with prohibit parking on PCH in this area, uh, on the landward side between twelve AM and two AM, and on the seaward side between two AM and four AM. Next slide. Uh, your second proj- project area, uh, under consideration is Zuma Beach. And on this one, uh, the exhibit shows the same, where the red is the no parking and the green is the areas where parking exists, uh, is allowed now. And you'll notice that on the landward side, it's mostly no parking. And so, um, what the city council did on this one is made all the restriction area only on the seaward side, and then they created an east and a west half. And so the east side, uh, starts at the Zuma Beach parking, uh, interest and goes to approximately halfway, uh, to the, um, let's see, that would be the eastern, uh, boundary of, uh, three oh two four five PCH. You'll see directly across the street, there is a red area on the seaward side. There's about four hundred and seventy-two, I think, feet of, uh, no parking, and that was another feature that we thought would work, um, to distinguish the two areas, the east and the west. And so then the west area would start, um, uh, on the other side of three oh two four five and go to the east edge of Trancus Creek. Next slide. The CDP for this project would, uh, install, um, regulatory signs along, this area is a little, a longer than the Corral, uh, beach area. It is one, uh, point five seven, and there'll be approximately, uh, twenty or thirty-eight signs on the seaward side. And again, almost all, and I think actually in this case, uh, all of them would be placed on the utility poles, uh, once Public Works receives the permit from Caltrans. Uh, signage would, uh, again prohibit parking on the seaward, uh, side of PCH on the east side, uh, between twelve and two AM and on the west side between two and four AM. And then both the Zuma Beach and the Corral Beach, uh, these signs will have language that, um, allows, uh, people that park there to know that, um, there is parking available on the other side or across the street. Um, so that if they are parked somewhere at two AM or a four AM, or let's see, I guess in this case it would be two AM, they would know where they could move, uh, to, um, uh, get out of the restricted parking area. Next slide. So, um, there's been various issues with this project, and one of them, yeah, with, with these projects that have been discussed, uh, it was discussed at Las Tunas. And, um, it's still, um, a concern of, uh, the Coastal Commission, uh, impacts to coastal or to homeless individuals. So when this project first started or for, when this, um, idea of having the staggered parking first started, uh, LA County had the, uh, uh, first uh, CDP that allowed that, and that was in the Topanga Beach area. That, um, project was appealed to the Coastal Commission, and at that appeal hearing, they eventually, um, uh, approved the LA County, uh, request. But at the, um, appeal hearing, the Coastal Commission expressed concern about the impact to any homeless individuals that'd be living in the RVs. So, um, the county had talked about how they were working toward a safe parking program, and I'll, I'll speak to that in just a minute. And so the, uh, Coastal Commission approved their CDP. Um, and then, of course, uh, I, they, um, sent a letter, um, about the city's Las Tunas, uh, CDP, but they never, uh, appealed it. Uh, the city has been very active in addressing homelessness in the city. Uh, they have, uh, sought grants. Um, they have a homeless task force, a homeless strategic plan. They have a winter shelter program. Uh, they've hired an outreach, um, group, uh, I believe it's called People Concern, um, that works with the homeless, uh, population in Malibu. There's also a condition that, uh, before this, um, both of the CDPs are implemented. Um, there will be a comprehensive outreach program to the people that are, yeah, in any RVs in that area, um, to connect them with, um, homeless services in the city. Along those lines, and so the city council, in their efforts to address the homeless, um, uh, looked at a possible safe parking program at Zuma Beach. So what a safe parking program is, is essentially an area where, um, homeless individuals that are either, and not just RVs, but any vehicle can park safely overnight. There's usually a restroom, a security guard, um, and social services are, uh, tied to, to the program. Um, so the social services, um, agencies are there to assist the, uh, people in, uh, finding permanent housing. And so these are almost always, uh, run by nonprofits. And so the city council wanted to look at the possibility of Zuma Beach uh, as a, uh, safe parking program. And so in order to do that, um, the city's, uh, LCP or the Min- Minnesota Code had to be amended to have a permit that, um, the nonprofit could apply for to have the safe parking program. And so that was a temporary use permit. So with all code amendments, the first thing that staff does is do, um, go to the, uh, city council for an initial hearing to get authorization to move forward. During that hearing, there was, uh, quite a bit of public interest, and, and so the council decided, um, to, um, put a hold on moving forward with that until they started having, uh, meetings, in-person meetings because of the public interest. So the, the city will still be going through, forward with this. It, it's just that it'll be delayed a bit. The other impacts, uh, that's, we always look at is the, uh, LCP's, uh, public access directing. And it's important to note on all of these sites that parking is available at all, all times, either on one side or the other. And, or in the case of Zuma, on east or the west end. And in addition to that, there's always parking on either side of the restricted areas. And so people could park just right outside of the, uh, protect, or, uh, the, uh, restricted area and not have to move, uh, their RV. Also for the Corral Beach, uh, project, I, it's important to note that directly across the street, there's the Malibu Beach RV Park. That has one hundred and forty-two RV rental sites and up to thirty-five tent sites, and it's open three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So there is, um, uh, RV parking available, um, for anybody that wants it, uh, at the Malibu Beach, uh, RV, uh, park. Next slide. Next slide. All right, so another issue was public safety. In, for Corral Beach, um, so the, 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 the thing to keep in mind here is, uh, there's limited crosswalks and, uh, but this is at night. This is from twelve midnight to four in the morning. So there's not a lot of need to cross PCH. But if, uh, somebody that was on the land side of the Corral, um, beach area wanted to, there is actually a marked, uh, crosswalk at Corral Canyon Road, so they could walk up there and, and walk across to the beach. For Zuma, in which all of the parking is on the sea, sea, uh, seaward side, um, the only, uh, reason that somebody I would think might want to, uh, go to the land side would be go to the, uh, shopping center, uh, there at Trancus Canyon. And in that case, they could walk up to Broad Beach and Trancus Canyon. And again, there's a light with a, um, marked crosswalk they can use. Um, we are still, the city is still having issues with discharge of wastewater. They've been, uh, turning those into a code enforcement and, and, um, uh, still working with that, but, uh, generally a lot of times there are some people in RVs, um, sort of see that area as, as like on a, the side of a road somewhere, you know, and, and so they are, uh, still discharging wastewater. And so, um, it really is a public health, uh, issue to have, um, the RVs parked there, uh, twenty-four seven. There was the concern about pushing the problem elsewhere, and while we have seen that in the sense that when the CDP and the parking restrictions went in, uh, to effect for Las Tunas, the, those RVs did start moving up the coast, which is why, yeah, you now have in front of you, uh, about Corral Beach and the Zuma Beach areas. But, um, we believe that this measured approach where the restricted areas are only in certain areas of, of the city with plenty of parking in between. And again, staggered, it's staggered parking that there, um, We have effectively addressed that issue. And it's also important to note that each of these areas are. Uh don't get the same um beachgoers. Uh so somebody that would park and and wanna go to Zuma Beach. Are people that would be more likely to hang out on the beach. And I'm talking about the public now and and their use of the beach. And their access to the beach, because Zuma Beach is a long, a wide sandy beach. Whereas Creole uh Canyon Beach, for instance, is a narrower rocky beach. And I think there's uh, I I think night night surfing, um diving uh and grunting runs. But at night, it's pretty much closed. Um, next slide. So with that, uh staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt, yeah, the two resolutions you have before you. Resolution seventy uh twenty seventy-six is for the Creole Beach area and twenty seventy-seven is for the Zuma Beach area. And uh the resolution would determine that the projects are exempt from uh CEQA. And um that the CDPs to install the regulatory signs were approved. And that concludes staff's presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any of the public speaking? Kathleen? Can people hear me? Do we have any uh public speakers?
Think Kathleen may be having some technical difficulties. If you wanna give her a second.
Uh apologies, I was.
There you go.
Uh, we do not have any members of the public. Let me just double check if someone.
I think you have one.
They did at the last minute sign. Okay, thank you. So we have.
Yeah, if it's at the will of uh planning commission, I'd like to have open the public hearing for a public speaker and then close it. Any objection?
Hans has got his hand up there.
He is the person that has signed up.
Okay, uh so I'm opening the public speaking. Public hearing. Do we have any uh public speakers?
We got Hans.
Yes, good evening. Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Good microphone, Hans.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, I do. Speaking to the mic.
Hello?
Go Hans.
I'm sorry, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
You can't hear us, apparently.
Can you hear?
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Hi, gentlemen and ladies, do you hear me? I don't know if you can hear me. Hi, I've never done this. Hey. Hi, my turn, yes? Okay, good. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm on big delay here. Okay, I I'm sorry, I'm just gonna tell you what I need to tell you. The uh. The California, State of California Public Utilities Code, every power pole in the state of California is owned by a utility. Not by the city or by Caltrans. Now, I can't, I have no returned audio, so I don't know if I'm on the air now. Uh, you can't put signs on power poles. It's against the rules. So no matter what you do, I wish you Godspeed. But you can't put uh signs on power poles. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and go to the council. Commission. Questions? Our first disclosures.
None.
I've driven past the beach, but that's it.
None for John. David?
Driven by both sides lots of times.
Chris?
You're muted, Chris.
That was my turn to miss a button. Um, yeah, so I I took a drive out just to kind of try to visualize what would happen with these um. These vehicles as they left the marked areas. Um, I didn't see mentioned in the staff report, so I did wanna bring it up. Um, are there any protections, like for example, on Broad Beach? Are there currently parking restrictions? I I did wanna um. See if that could be addressed, uh because I didn't really see that too clearly called out for areas kind of at either end. Um, that might impact on the private areas, uh you know, private streets, what have you. So um, that was the one um observation I had. Just driving away from there, kind of with this in my mind.
So the question is whether there is um on Broad Beach, whether you could park an RV?
Yeah, I just um uh at at either end of both of these projects, you know, Broad Beach came to mind for me. Could they pull into the Ralphs? You know, those would be the logical places that a larger vehicle would kind of get stuck if nothing else. Um, if they're trying to navigate this kind of loop, they're gonna have to do to cycle between uh when they're when they're moving out of that. So I just wasn't sure if there's any consideration for those other areas which will be kind of spillover.
So um, I didn't know, Richard, you uh Richard probably might know better than I do whether there. Uh what the parking limitations would be on actual Broad Pete Broad Beach Road. But yes, the the uh there on Pacific Coast Highway, there is parking on either side of these projects. And so somebody could move up further on uh Pacific Coast Highway and park outside of this area.
Okay, okay, so they don't, they don't have to kind of make a loop or a U-turn, whichever the condition is in order to kind of avoid the ticket. They could simply kind of move to either end, so we don't have a ton of kind of U-turns and things like that that we're setting up for by uh introducing this.
That's right. And that's, that is, that is their choice, of course. They, if they want to um. What, I think what the city found at Las Tunas was um people just didn't park there. Because who wants to get up at two in the morning or four in the morning and and move? Um, and so it it. Uh, there was like a marked reduction in in vehicles parking there.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
David? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, Jeff was first.
Uh Joyce, what was our experience in terms of enforcement uh in the Las Tunas area? Was there, were there special? Discussions held with the sheriff's department as to who was gonna be doing the ticketing and how much, how much pressure there was going to be brought to bear? Or was it just sort of, well, left up in the air?
So um I will have to defer to Richard on that, uh because once the permit was uh processed, I um. And I did not follow once the signs got installed. Um, I know that they did the homeless outreach, but after the signs got installed. I uh was not involved in the project.
Right. Richard, do you know?
Uh, so we did have both uh the sheriffs and I believe the volunteers on patrol enforcing it. Uh, the catch, though, is that we have limited resources in the evening hours, two in the morning. Uh however, what we are doing, though, is we have submitted a request to the sheriff's department about uh extra enforcement. In the evening hours specifically to work with these types of issues, uh the RV parking, the tents. And the homeless is issues in the city. So we're actually trying to do a better job of it. And we're waiting to find out what that cost is gonna be.
Second question. Uh Joyce, you've heard Hans's comments about uh power poles and the ability to post signs on them. Does that change anything with regard to what we're doing?
Uh, no, we intentionally, uh and I was just looking to see uh if anybody from Public Works is here. Uh, Public Works is the ones that work with um uh Caltrans and the agents, different agencies to uh get the signs posted. But the way uh we purposely wrote the staff report and uh the approval you have in front of you is just for new signs. So it doesn't really um. We we wanted to have that flexibility that the signs could be placed anywhere, so it's just the number of signs on each side of the road.
Okay, David?
Yeah, I, this is the ultimate catch twenty-two issue, and I think we all need to be aware of what we're doing. The more successful we are in getting these people to move, the more it becomes somebody else's problem or another part of Malibu's problem. So you push one place and the pull comes the other place. And I, you know, I, that's not to say we shouldn't do this. I think we should. But we shouldn't kid ourselves that this is solving any kind of problem, because it's not. Um, and I I've seen the tuna situation. Um, it's better. It's certainly not solved. I mean, there are still a fair number of vehicles there a lot of the time. And it it's, it's all about enforcement and it's about how we want enforcement to work. Do we want this to be stringent? Do we really wanna move these people somewhere else, meaning elsewhere in Malibu or elsewhere up or down the coast? And if we wanted to work at all, uh what Richard just got done saying about, we're talking to the sheriffs about maybe getting some more enforcement people. If we don't, you can put up as many signs as you want. It's not gonna accomplish anything. Uh, you'll get a few people moving. But until people write tickets and until they, you, until this population knows that we're serious about this, um, you know, signs are great and it's the starting point. But I think until we really get serious about where we're gonna move these vehicles to and how we're gonna deal with a homeless situation, a larger issue. Uh, you know, it's, this is better than nothing, but not by a lot.
I know um that was one of the interests uh for the safe parking program at Zuma. And um. That, when that item went before the uh city council, there was a a lot of community opposition to. To it. Uh, I think it was probably um, uh, we just need to do a better job of um educating people that. Now, this are, these are like, this is a nonprofit group. There's security guards there. They come at night and then they're gone. Uh, but that would be the ideal situation, because uh then the RVs would actually have a place to uh park at night safely.
Yeah, Dave?
Uh, yeah, I, and I I'll echo David's comments. I mean, we've got an order, we got in front of this with no enforcement in it. And I, when do you think you're gonna get an agreement by the sheriff in terms of what they're gonna do? Because as far as I know, up on Tunas Beach, nobody's enforcing it. And that's been in place for a while now. I mean, passing ordinances, our Davis says, great, we can put up signs. It's gonna, somebody's gonna do something. So when do you think you're gonna get an agreement from that whoever to to enforce this stuff?
Once we have an idea of what the cost will be, it'll go before the council, I believe. Uh, just because it's a a new expenditure of funds, so we'll go before the council. And then also, um, I can inquire too about what our volunteers on patrol could do uh during those hours.
Okay, so so when do you think we will get an answer that says, here's how we're gonna enforce this?
I think, well, how we're gonna enforce it, I think, um, I think the main question is really, uh, when can we see some extra resources for the enforcement? And I will be glad to let you know once I have that answer. Like I said, at this point, what I know is that we're, we've reached out to the sheriff's department. And we've asked them to give us a quote of what the cost would be for something like that.
Did you have one, David? What? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
No, just, yeah, well, I, we're gonna, I guess we're gonna get what you're gonna get. Joyce, you mentioned that if people are dumping sewage on the beach, there's some enforcement action that takes place. What is that?
Uh, so I know that uh code enforcement is involved and Richard uh has this, has the. Uh, when it happened at Las Tunas, I know the sheriff uh was involved. And I know now uh code enforcement is, but is sheriff still helping with that or is it?
What happens? Okay, so you're dumping sewage. What happens to the person dumping the sewage?
My understanding is that the person doing it is ticketed. That's what I've been told. But yes, it's. Our city code enforcement staff with the help of the sheriff. And in the case of the Las Tunas incident, I think county beaches and harbors, Caltrans. The sheriff and the city, all four agencies were involved in the cleanup of that as well as uh the. Uh, going after the individuals doing it. But I think the hard part is uh catching somebody in the process of dumping the sewage.
Right, I don't disagree. Okay, hey, go ahead. Somebody else, I got one more, but I'll come back to it. Go ahead, John.
David? No, okay, I have a a fundamental question. Um, at Zuma. If I have an RV and I'm living in it and uh I have to move it. Uh, twelve to two. Don't I just get in my, don't I get in my car and just drive down to uh the next zone and park? Isn't just a big circle? Is is the, or is half of the street emptied at any given time?
So if you were uh, if you were on the, if you were parked on the west side, right, and um and you were there from um. So on west side, you could be there between two to four AM. Right? And so if you were parked there, um.
Doesn't the other?
You would just move down to the east end.
So, and the east end moves up to the west end.
Can we bring up slides four and five for this? Because I was thinking the same thing. That traffic pattern that gets generated. If we look at it either slide four or five in a timing, because I'm afraid there have to be two U-turns for what you're getting to, John.
Well, what I'm getting to is nobody ever moves off the beach. They just move down the beach. They just do a big circle. They have to get up once. They drive down to the other section. The old people drive down to the other section. And the whole highway still has RVs all along it. Is that correct?
Well, there would be no parking, right, on the east side from twelve to two AM. And then um, right, so there'd be that, that area from twelve to two, there would be no vehicles parked there. Right? And so then um. Soonest they could come there would be, so if they were there at eleven o'clock at night, uh, they would have to leave.
At twelve.
They were on the east side, so they would, they could leave and go down to the west side. So they would make a U-turn and go down to the west side. If you were on the west side, uh, there would be no parking between two and four AM.
Which means you go to the east side. There's no, there's, there's always, unless I got this wrong, the same number of uh RVs are playing musical chairs. In the same parking spot. And when the Caltrans by at two fifteen, it's all full of RVs. Is that right?
So this is not unlike what happens at Creole and uh Las Tunas. It's just that it's that, you know. They're on either the land side or the seaside or, right? And so it's, it's, it's the same concept. And so the, the concept really is to discourage people from doing that a- and to make it. Um, so, so you don't wanna wake up at midnight or two in the morning or four in the morning to move your RV. So that is the reason for the staggered uh parking restrictions.
So what I'm wondering is, on 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 the Creelso one, you move across the street, you're no longer on the beach. Then you have to move back and be on the beach. On on the Zuma one, you're always on the beach. Why do you care if you're on the east end or the west end? You just move once and you're done. Is that right?
Uh, yes, uh, except.
So for the whole time, the whole side of the beach at Zumba has RVs on it. So what have we accomplished?
Can we, can we please bring up slides four or five? Because the 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 traffic pattern is, I think, an even bigger concern. Because for them, they they get to the end of that at one of the times, and then they have to loop back to the other end. So they have to make two U-turns somewhere. To recycle. If they're gonna play that game you're talking about, John. And that's what got my attention was that not just moving down. But then looping back to the start again.
Well, I don't think it's, yeah, and my real problem is. It's who gets the beach? The RVs or the public? And in reality, the RVs have it all the time, twelve, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Well, I'm also, I'm also can, uh, sorry.
Let me just ask Joyce one question. What happens if you have twelve to two and three to five?
Uh, twelve.
Then you don't, then you don't have a hundred percent of the beach covered by RVs.
I, I would discourage the commission from adjusting these hours. And the staff worked very hard with the California Coastal Commission to find something that we could pass. Uh, almost immediately, uh in an effort to try to find some sort of fix of this problem. Uh, there is a concern and that concern is that if we create. Too long of a period of no parking or anything like that. Uh, it could affect the public's ability to be able to utilize the beach twenty-four hours a day. Even though I do realize under the LA County Code, that beach is closed from sunset to sunrise. Uh, there is that in their provisions. So I I would discourage that. And also on the issue of the U-turns. I believe that this stretch of highway has a, the paddles and a raised median. So both U-turns, regardless of the ends, they would either be at the intersection of Tranqus. Um, and PCH, which is a protected left. And also the U-turns would be, I believe, the Bush and PCH, which that too is a protective left. I don't think there's really an opportunity, oh, or Morning View, excuse me. Um, I don't think there's really an opportunity to just uh cut across the highway along that stretch. I would need to look at it on my way in tomorrow, uh, but I believe there are, there are uh barricades to prevent that.
Well, and that's part of my point, like a large vehicle would have to make like a three or five or seven point turn at those points. And I'm, I just, I I'm, I am concerned about a potential traffic pattern that could get set up if people are choosing to try to hop the zones like John's describing. And that's, that's all I just wanted us to, I I recognize, Richard, that the staff has worked with coastal. Um, I respect that, but at least to talk it through is all I was trying to get to.
Well, and my real question is, why do we bother with Zuma if all it is is it doesn't change anything? It just changes which RV is in which spot. It doesn't change the situation that it's full of RVs twenty-four seven. Which is the problem now. Nobody cares that the purple RV is down there and the green one's down there. They don't care if they switch every day. Uh, what difference does it make? So how do we solve anything here? David?
This is obviously a very baby step, the first step in this direction. And if for no other reason, it'll be enforced against someone who parks in one spot and doesn't want to move for a month uh or whatever the time period is, I doubt very much we're going to see a huge number of people in the middle of the night. Moving them back and forth to just get back to the spot where they were. I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think that's happened to uh Tuna with the signs down there. I think this gives us, this gives enforcement a leg to stand on to deal with, you know, serious violations. And I, it's certainly not a s- a a long term or a comprehensive solution. And in terms of discharge, you know, it's a horribly intractable problem. I mean, these people don't have another place to live. On the other hand, I ride my bike on a long bike ride from La Costa to Point Dumeback a couple of times a week. And last week, there was a guy parked RV parked on the, on the beach side. And he was facing the highway and he was peeing out into the highway. But I went around him. But I mean, if we don't think this is a serious, everyday bad problem for our community, it is. And this at least is better than nothing, but we shouldn't kid ourselves. It's not a whole lot better than nothing.
Jeff? Yeah, I I think of this as if it were somebody coming forward with with a house or another project that they wanted to to present to us. This is the city coming to us with asking for a coastal development permit. And our issue is, do, can we make the findings for this project or not? It's not an issue for us as to whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. This is an idea that the city has come forward to present to us. And and it's the city council's job to decide whether it's a good or bad idea. Our job is to decide whether or not we can make the findings. If we can, we approve it. If we can't, we deny it. But but we don't deny it because we don't think it's going to work or because we think it's a bad idea.
Well, let me ask, uh, I guess, Joyce.
Yes.
I'm a cop. I roll by there at two o'clock in the morning. Okay? How do I know, I roll by there at two fifteen? How do I know the RV I'm looking there just pulled in or has been there for twenty-four hours? Do I go and mark all the tires at at one forty-five? And then come back and see if there's the mark still on it? And then how do I know the next section? They aren't the same people. Unless you have a photographic memory. I think somebody counted fifty-seven RVs down there one day. You have to know each one and where it was at one forty-five to 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 write any tickets.
Now, they just, if they're in the wrong zone, they get ticketed at two o'clock.
Oh, no, no. They moved from the other zone or they didn't move from the other zone. At two o'clock and a four o'clock. So a guy every day could move or not move, and you never know if he moved. So there's, it's, it's something that cannot be enforced. Not that it may not be enforced, it can't be enforced, seems to me crazy.
But keep, keep in mind, um, Chair Plaza, that the signage prohibits any type of parking. So east end from twelve AM to two AM, um, there's no parking allowed.
So half of the people go where?
That's away.
Exactly, which is the whole point of this is to get people to move to um a more appropriate location where RVs um can be parked safely. So it's not like, it's, it's not like there's cars there east and west all the time, right? Because there are periods where there's no parking and and uh no one can park there.
Okay, and and uh, does this have anything to do with the city expanding the parking on a western beach?
Uh, no, not.
That's a logical place for them to go.
Yeah, there's no, you're talking about the Westward Beach uh project. Yeah, now that, that, that project started and is well on its way um to uh forward before this uh project started.
Okay, uh, another question is, the city, and I'll get right to you, David, the city oh actually owns the land north, northwest of Tranqus. Uh, where the sign that says twenty-one miles of nothing, a beautiful land is. They owned all that land, which is way beyond the Caltrans Eastman. Is any posting going to be done on that city land?
Um, that, you know, you're talking about the wide uh dirt area. Is that what you're referring to that you can?
It's actually owned by the city.
Um, I don't know, uh, that would be a question for Richard or actually probably somebody from Public Works. Um, and I'm not sure. If I see.
The answer there, Richard?
So we were rolling this out in phases. And so we can look at that as being the next area. We would just need to um, you know, make sure that we speak with the council to get an ordinance passed. Like, for example, we started with Tuna Canyon and Malibu Pier. And then we came back last month, I think it was actually, to the council to get them to amend the ordinance. And we created the ordinance for this area. And so we would do the same because uh when you speak to our Public Safety Commission, when they petition the council, they were actually looking for something citywide. And originally, we were going to try that until the Coastal Commission um gave us some direction or comment, I should say, not necessarily direction. And so we went then to try to find a more palatable solution. So that's why we're doing it in phases. I definitely think that is something that the council and the Public Safety Commission wants us to definitely look at is actually that west end of PCH.
Yeah, no, I understand the west end of PCH. I'm talking about the land that is not PCH. It is, it's the same as if you pulled your RV into the city parking lot.
No, no, I understand. I know what area you're speaking about, and I think honestly that um, I would not be surprised if we are given direction to look at extending this from Tranqus uh towards the end of the city.
David?
Yeah, I, to Jeff's point, I think we clearly can make the findings. I would make a motion that we approve both of these as staff have submitted with the additional request, not as part of the uh report, I guess, out on this motion, but I would request that Richard come back to us uh when it's practical and let us know how this is going to be enforced. Um, but that, that's not to say the motion should include that. It's just, I'm curious when you, you know, are we going to hire more? Once there's a determination as to how the enforcement is going to work, I think it would be nice to report it back to the planning commission.
Uh, Chris?
Um, I just, I I I'm lining up with where Commissioner Wild is going. But I did want to just kind of visit um number uh two dot two seven, um, LUP policy two dot two seven. And I think it's two dot eleven, where they're both um kind of referencing the health and safety aspects. Um, yeah, two, two dot eleven and two dot two seven are both, both called out in these um reports. Do we have any signage which says where the nearest um pump out stations are or something? So at least if somebody has, you know, gray or black water, they have to discharge. They get some direction for where they can go? Like, is there anything in our signage that says go to RV Park X or something? Or any services provided by the city to help with that, with that issue?
I, not that I'm aware of, unless there is something posted on the city's website that lists the uh places in town. Uh, but not, not as it relates to this project.
To help with items two eleven and two dot two seven, is there anything that we might want to add to the signage that says nearest? At least one sign on each of these areas nearest uh pump out is wherever it is?
I think. Jeff? There are to me in the town and the nearest ones are in Oxnard and the north up into, um. Actually, there's one by up in the Thousand Oaks area, but those are the only dump stations that I know of. Uh, and those are, those aren't free. Uh, I'm sure they, uh, they're, they're probably a dump station. Absolutely, there's a dump station at the Malibu RV Park, but that's not free either.
Not free either.
Well, I I would suggest, and then I'll call on you, Steve, that the city has a sewage treatment plant. But, uh, Steve?
Yeah, I, and I I'll agree with David that we should get some, some report that sort of says, here's what enforcement's going to look like. But I think more important to that, I think what you got to do, Richard, is once, whatever this thing gets implemented, you know. If if you just listen to what the people, the residents of Malibu were talking about, they think this whole thing is nuts ever. So whatever this process is, I think what the city's got to do is go back to the residents and say, here's what we're doing, here's how it's working. Let them know if we're actually making ordinances that are accomplishing something, or if we're just putting stuff on paper that has absolutely no impact on anything, because I think it makes a difference. So I'd like, we do this, I want us, I'd like to add something that says, there is some overall report that gets done that can be given to the public. He says, here's how effective our solution is.
Well, and and I'd want to call out something to, because again, to to your point, Commissioner Earring, the, the public is, you know, the input is, hey, this, this is what's happening. You know, people are going to the bathroom on the side of the road. People are jumping on the side of the road. So at least have something where we have, like, like was offered maybe a website or some type of a, some type of notice as part of this um to uh to help address that, that safety issue, at least some effort.
Yeah, and maybe we're in a situation where this is not before us.
Yeah.
Hell, uh, now, um, I have a couple of questions. If a guy pulls his RV, and this is probably for Richard, I guess, guy pulls his RV up and pops the plates off of it. And at two o'clock in the morning, he doesn't answer his door. Uh, we can't tow, correct? So what do you do? You just say, hey, no problem. Can't tow him? There he is. Give him a ticket and you don't know his name? Uh, so how do you do that? And how do, how do we handle things like that?
John, before you get an answer for that, and I'm sure Richard's going to have a full and complete answer to satisfy you. I'm going to second David's motion. Okay, sure that the record shows that it's was seconded.
Yeah, and I definitely think there are going to be folks out there that are going to go beyond popping the plates off. They're probably going to throw some piece of paper or something like that over the VIN number in the windshield, so you can't even get the VIN number on the thing. Uh, you know, and I'm sure they're not going to answer the door when the sheriff bangs on the door. So I'm I'm sure there's going to be some issues, but I, I think that the, the whole point of this is that it's a start.
Okay, let me ask a last, a couple more and then we'll vote, um. Is it what you're saying, and and I, seeing on next door, everybody thinks that the Zuma Beach parking lot died. And you're saying that that is just going to get pushed off and going to get considered again. And my question would, a part of that is that area is going to be a staging area for building the bridge. So is there any thought, is it actually going to come up for consideration? And should the people on the west end be concerned?
I, so it's my understanding that um the action taken by the city council was not to table it permanently, but just to table the item um until they could have a full um discussion with the public um at an in-person meeting in which the public could attend. So, um, as you know, Malibu is always um has, um, is always veil, available and willing to have a um discussion with the public. And so, um, I don't know that there's anything, you know, when that moves forward, the public will be noticed and they can come down and and uh speak to the issue and, um. So, yeah, I I haven't been told that it's been tabled permanently.
So I hope they leave up their COVID shields. Uh, Richard is.
Can I call the question?
Uh, no, because we're still discussing it. Uh, we have two hands up, three, Jeff and Steve. Uh, Richard. There's camping now on the beach at Zuma Beach, um tents, et cetera. Uh, is any of this handling any of that? Or can you just go camp on the beach?
Well, you can't camp on the beach is my understanding. I think that's actually, um. You know, as I mentioned earlier, the county has some regulations. So we are looking into the, the tents that were on the beach. Uh, there are only certain types of shade. If you read the ordinances that the LA County has for the, the beaches, there are only cer- certain types of shade things you can have on the beach and a certain number of sides, but they're during daylight hours. So my understanding is that it's a separate issue. And you are not permitted to camp on the beach. And so, as I mentioned, our code enforcement staff uh did contact the county and we're looking into the events of this past weekend.
And that's not Boise decision.
Pardon me?
That isn't covered by the Boise decision.
I have a feeling there are some, I'm not sure how that plays out. That would be Pat, I think, could speak to that. But I, what I can tell you is that there are, there have been regulations about camping on the beach.
Okay, Jeff? I just had the, I I was under the impression that that uh LA Beaches and Harbors was not entirely enthusiastic about the idea having a safe parking area on Zuma Beaches. Do you know whether, have they been consulted? I mean, it seems to me it would be foolish to have a big public hearing if we hadn't gotten by it first.
So it's my, my understanding, um. Um, so the item that was before the city, city council was not a public hearing as to whether to have. Uh, it was just to um ask them whether uh they wanted to amend the code, the temporary use permit section uh to add uh safe parking lots as a um category or use that could obtain a temporary use permit.
Okay.
So, um, and it's the county, um, it's my understanding and it is. It was the county that staff, uh, city staff was working on with on the possibility of uh using Zuma Beach. And so, uh, I don't know, I, I'm not sure the status of it, but when I was working on the Las Tunas, um uh CDP, the county had actually issued an RFP uh to looking for nonprofits to run uh safe parking programs. And, um, so the, the county is actively looking for sites. And so, um, I'm guessing that the city is working closely with the uh county um on the Zuma Beach in terms of that, them being aware of uh uh what we are doing and uh regarding the temporary use permit.
Okay, uh, Joyce, uh, temporary use permits are very limited in time. So you're going to, you're planning on having three or four of these things around so you can keep moving the temporary use permits?
I am not sure, um, uh, I was not a part of the um, the temporary use permit. But I, it could be like, and Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the farmer's market operating with temporary use permit?
No, it's got a CUP.
I, I think that one of the things we want to look at too, uh, as a city is modifying the temporary use permit um ordinances. And so this would be part of that.
Steve? Uh, just two quickers, or David, I like that you're a motion to move. I'd like to just add two things to that. One, that city staff does come back to us with some definition of what the enforcement is going to look like. I mean, just so we, we know that we're not sort of just voting on stuff that goes into ether someplace. And I would also like something that says that the city wants to sing, you know, six months after this is implemented, the city produces some report that tells us if it is or it isn't working or what we're actually accomplishing with this thing.
Uh, David, do you accept that?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem with that. I don't know how feasible it is, but. Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem with that. I don't know how feasible it is, but.
Yeah, but, you know, it's.
Okay, uh, Jeff, did, did you make the second?
Yeah, I made the second. Uh, yeah, I'm, I. And questions of enforcement are really, if, if it's just a matter of curiosity, then that's fine. It would be nice to have Richard come back. As far as telling the city to. Come back with some sort of a report, that's well beyond, we're not, I know you guys.
It's a recommendation, Jeff, go into the city council that says the residents should get some idea if we're voting on stuff that means something. Or if we're just voting on stuff for the sake of voting. That's all I'm trying to do.
Okay, if it was a recommendation rather than a demand, then a fine.
Okay, Chris?
Just a similar request of Commissioner Wild, looking at a. Item five B, just for reference, condition two B currently says installing a total of approximately forty-five new signs. I would just ask if we'd consider. Adding to that, I don't know how best to state it, but like at each end of the parking area is something which says where the nearest. You know, discharge station is just so, you know, I don't know the intent of somebody who's parking here. But if they just don't know where to go, at least having something. It seems like a minimum effort we could do to try to stop that, you know, safety issue, which is part of our jobs.
Joyce, is that something that the coastal would object to?
Well, the, the, the one thing, I, I, and, and, and Commissioner Marks, correct me, interrupt me if, if I'm wrong. So. So what, what, what you're looking for is some of signage that says the nearest place to basically get rid of this stuff and. And, and, and while that's very much, you know, I, 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 I get the point. I guess my concern is kind of the, the ongoing and obligations for the city to continue to investigate that. Ensure it's open, ensure it's operational. The last thing we would want is. You know, someone saying, hey, I saw the sign that said the nearest dump station is three miles down the road. It doesn't, it's not there. They try to make a U-turn and now all of a sudden you're kind of worst case scenario, which I understand what you're trying to, 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 to dissuade against. Now occurs. And now I would say, once again, this is speaking hypothetically, I hope this never happens. But do you get my point that, 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 that?
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, but this type of concrete signage. You know, I, 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 I'm not trying to tell you what's best, but that, that would be my big concern with that.
No, and I, I was thinking of that as I was asking, it's more, it's more like, I'm trying to balance. Okay, the city having to maintain kind of a sign at the end of each of these zones where recognizing and. And implicitly kind of welcoming RVs to park here, you know, granted, they have to move every night, but they're going to be here. So at least we could kind of provide a, a light service to say, here's a sign, just says where you can go and maybe we update it quarterly. That's all I'm proposing for, for a discussion.
So I, I would say, um, now after I think about this, the. What, what the code allows, CDP is for regulatory signs. So these are not regulatory signs, they're informational signs. So maybe, maybe that kind of recommendation would go along with. Uh, Commissioner Euring's idea, or whoever's idea was of to report, I think it was Commissioner Euring's idea of reporting back. Richard reporting back on enforcement. Is that, you know, the recommendation is for the city to look at something like that.
I think we can solve. One problem here as far as health and safety, we could say. At the end of each zone. Quote the city code about health and safety and. Dumping crap on the street. We must have some code for that. Just say, beware, you, you violation of so-and-so's code, so-and-so. Uh, and they've all got cell phones, believe me, they can look up the nearest dumping point.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But that way it's a regulation, we're not quiet, we're, we're not. Saying we know where it is, we're saying you can't do it.
Makes sense to me.
Does that, is that something David, you would go along with?
But my impression is that this has been very heavily negotiated between some group, including Richard and the California Coastal Commission. And I'm a little reluctant to, to throw things in here that are going to make it. More difficult for us to just get this part done. But I, I'd like to hear Richard's view of this. Because what, where we left this was it was a recommendation that he come back to us with enforcement information. We were not putting in our, uh, what we're passing here, additional requirements.
So. To get into the reporting, yes, we can definitely come back and say what's happening. You know, and, and just as long as we all remember that this is the planning department and nobody in our department other than Doug. And I don't know if Doug can even write a ticket, to be honest with you, our code enforcement officers to an RV. Uh, this is something that we just have to work with the sheriff and the resources we have and our volunteers on patrol. And, and in terms of the dumping. You know, I don't think we'd run into a, an issue with the coastal commission if we cited an additional ordinance. It's just. Keep in mind, the signs already have a note on them. That lets folks know that there's parking available somewhere else. That's something we had to agree to with the coastal commission. But you know, I think in terms of like, hey, here's where you can go and dump the sewage from your RV. I think that's something that we can address during the, the safe parking program. Because the, the whole idea of that is to provide these folks a place to park and the. The utilities or the things that go along with that. And one of them is where do you discharge your waste?
Well, do you think, uh, either you or Joyce, that. There is a problem with posting our ordinance number and say no dumping?
So I'm trying to. I'm trying to think through this. So. The authority that, that we're using for this is chapter ten point nineteen, which is called overnight parking. And right, so that chapter deals with overnight parking and parking restriction signs. And so I don't know, um, I guess you could add an additional informational sign or. I don't know, Patrick, do you have a sense of whether you could do it?
Yeah, I mean.
Chapter.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to scour the municipal code as, as we speak right now. I mean, I'm not, you know. I, I, I guess my. My question for the, for the commission, and, and maybe I'm, I'm just kind of misunderstanding this is that, is I mean, I, 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 I'm not sure that that's. An, an issue that, that the city is seeing that people don't know it's, it's, it's illegal to, to dump. So I mean, I, I, I'm not sure what, what we, it's, it's more of just an informational, just to tell them, hey. Don't, don't do this. Is that, is that the, 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 the point of this additional sign?
Yeah, we'll give you a ticket if you do it.
Reason for the parking signs, yeah, it's just to make an awareness so you can't park here, you can't, you know.
You can't dump here.
Dump your waste here, yeah.
Hmm, I mean, so, so, I mean, so Joyce, I mean, you are right. I mean, it's not really. There in, 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 in ten nineteen, um, as I said before, I, I'm, I'm. I'm searching the, the municipal code right now, trying to find. A, that, you know, explicit kind of authority.
Was there a state code we could reference or something?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, so to me, that, that's like, I mean, I, I have a hard time believing that the city has its own municipal code section stating you can't, you know. You know, dump, you know, human waste for, from, from, from an RV. But once again, I, I, I can't say that with a thousand percent certainty. However, I'm sure there is some. A, a, as you said, Commissioner Marks.
Well, we don't want to debate the world about it. I, I would suggest that the staff. Research that when they take this, their staff report to the city council. Because it may not, maybe the Doug can't enforce things without notice. I, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an enforcement guy. There's a reason why there's no trespassing signs. And there's a reason why there's no trash signs. So there must be a reason why there's no dump in your sewage on the street. Um, and we must have in our, we have, one thing our code enforcement can do without a citizen turning him in is health and safety. And so I would just suggest, and we won't put in the motion, that. You guys present this to the city council after asking. Code enforcement, if this is something that would help them. If that, then I'll drop it after that. Does anybody else have anything else? So let's call the questions. Can we have a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okey dokey. We are now on item. Four B. Let me find it and I'll read it. Item four B is wireless communication facility number nineteen dash zero one four coastal development permit number. Nineteen dash zero seven five, variance number nineteen dash zero five oh, and site plan review number nineteen. Dash one one oh, an application for new wireless communications facility on top of the replacement. Of a replacement telephone pole in the public right of way. At three nine five six Cross Creek Road. May we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Chair Mazza, members of the planning commission. Next item before you is coastal development permit number nineteen dash zero seven five. And wireless telecommunications facility number nineteen dash zero one four for a project located at three nine five six point five Cross Creek Road. Next slide please. Property is located north of Pacific Coast Highway in the public right of way of Cross Creek Road. It is directly west of the Shell gas station on the corner of PCH and Cross Creek Road. Next slide please. The project proposes a replacement thirty-two foot, three inch tall street light pole topped with an omnidirectional canister antenna. Electrical support equipment consisting of two remote radio units. And a battery backup unit, which will be concealed inside an equipment cage along the sidewalk of the public right of way. And one existing meter pedestal that will be replaced with a new meter pedestal. And an in-ground handhole box containing electrical disc, an electrical disconnect switch. Next slide please. The project includes two discretionary requests. Variance number nineteen dash zero five zero for a replacement street light pole over twenty-eight feet. And site plan review number nineteen dash one one zero. For the installation and operation of a wireless communications facility located in the public right of way. Next slide please. The wireless facility proposes to fill a gap in Verizon's network coverage. The map areas show green as good, yellow as fair, and purple as poor coverage. The photo to the left shows Verizon's coverage area as it stands today. The photo on the right shows how the coverage is estimated to be with the proposed wireless facility. Next slide please. The applicant provided an alternative site analysis, which displayed other possible locations that could meet Verizon's coverage needs in the area. All alternatives were reviewed by, uh, were reviewed by staff and the proposed location is the least environmentally damaging alternative. The other locations would be more visually obstructive along the scenic highway and maintenance could require possible land closures of PCH. Next slide please. Here's a closer view of the proposed location. The plans show the proposed location of the new pole in the upper square and the pole to be replaced approximately fifty feet to the south in the lower square. Next slide please. Here's an elevation with the wireless antenna on top of the proposed pole. The total height from the ground is thirty-two feet, three inches. The applicant is requesting variance number nineteen dash zero five zero. For development over twenty-eight feet in order to maintain consistency with other streetlight fixtures on Cross Creek Road. And meet the preferred design guidelines of the LIP, which require co-locations on existing utilities when feasible. The applicant could have applied for an independent pole at twenty-eight feet, meeting the standard. But that would be more environmentally intrusive than what is, than what is proposed. Staff reviewed the variance and were able to make all ten findings of the LIP. Next slide please. Here are some photo simulations of what the facility would look like in real life. Next slide please. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number twenty dash zero, twenty dash seven one. Approving CDP number nineteen dash zero seven five and WCF nineteen dash zero one four approving the project as conditioned. I'm available for any questions and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Do we have public speakers on this item?
We do.
Okay. So first, what?
I'm sorry, we have the applicant team. We have a main speaker and then a number of people for questions. And then we have two members, three members of the public.
Okay, so. Let's have the public ask questions unless somebody has a question from the staff right now that they need answered. Anybody?
Open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Disclosures, disclosures for?
Yeah, disclosures, I'm sorry, disclosures. Jeff?
Um, none other than the fact that I had about a twenty-minute telephone. Conference with Ryan Embry, uh, just before the meeting tonight, uh, discussed. Uh, a number of issues. Relating to. The. Existence or the lack thereof of. Voice. Coverage in, in the area and. And related issues regarding to their, the Verizon's possible entitlement.
Anybody else?
Nothing.
I went by, I went by the site just to get a sense of where things were. And I also did have a discussion with, with Ryan on this topic as well.
I just walked around the site.
Yeah, I'm done. I, I talked to Richard Mollica this afternoon about. The, uh, staff report in general, learned nothing new. Okay, let's open the public hearing.
Before we do, John, I, I have one question I'd like to ask Richard. We, Richard, we have a. We have a consultant, do we not, that, that handles these applications for us, fellow by the name of Jonathan Kramer?
Yes, that is correct.
Is he here tonight? Is he available?
I believe he is. I saw him log in earlier. Uh, let's take a peek if he's still here.
I've been looking for him. I haven't seen him.
Oh, he is. His audio is currently muted, but I see Dr. Jonathan.
Ah, there he is. I see him. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's, unless, without objection, we're all going to open the public hearing. Uh, the opponent has fifteen, uh, the applicant has fifteen minutes. They reserve any time. In that fifteen minutes for rebuttal.
Jared?
Yes.
Quick question, if the, the applicant is going to be represented by this. Your con group. Just to have them explain to us what they do, what, what is their role inside Verizon? Are they the technical team? Are they the sales? What, what do they do? It would just be interesting to know when they speak.
Okay, well, I hope they do that, otherwise we'll ask them. Okay, let's open the public hearing. Kathleen, we have a team for the Verizon.
We do. Uh, the main speaker will be Sonal Thakur. And then the other people are for questions and perhaps, uh, the main speaker can introduce them. If the others have something else, a specialty they'd like to impart before questions.
Okay, is he unmuted?
Yes.
You may start, Mr. Thakur.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Thakur, sorry.
No problem. Good evening, Chair Mazza and members of the planning commission. My name is Sonal Thakur with Yukon Group. On behalf of Verizon Wireless, we are a wireless consulting company that was hired by Verizon Wireless to. Find a candidate that would work for Verizon's RF engineer to address the coverage objectives of the. Area in the Malibu downtown and work to design. A small cell facility that would meet those needs for coverage and capacity. I do want to request any remaining time for my presentation to be allotted to myself and the rest of the Verizon team. So that we can answer any questions that staff has. I also wanted to thank city staff for their cooperation and their hard work throughout the course of this entire project. As, uh, next slide please. As was covered in the staff report, the proposal tonight is for the installation of a new small cell facility in the city's downtown. To address the. Existing poor conditions of coverage and capacity. Uh, for the Verizon customers in this network. The proposed small cell facility would be a replacement of an existing SDE street light in the right of way. That would include a emergency power backup as a solution. It should be noted that this battery backup unit is an amenity that. It should be noted that this battery backup unit is an amenity that has only been offered to the city of Malibu as a request from city staff after the Woolsey fire to provide emergency communication as well as resiliency. Our team identified six potential candidates for this location before the current site was selected. Next slide please. Ninety percent of the US households use wireless service, and of that, 240 million 911 calls are made annually, which is the reason why there's an ever-increasing need for better wireless infrastructure. Of those 240 million 911 calls made annually, 80% of those 911 calls come from cell phones, which as we've seen from examples as the Woolsey fire or other emergencies, that need is crucial. There's this increased need for citizens to be able to have access to 911 as well as reverse 911, especially if a wireless device is their only means and form of connection. And then in North America, the average household has 13 connected devices, and smartphones actually outnumber tablets six to one. Next slide please. So why is Verizon expanding their network and improving the coverage and capacity? Verizon is expanding their network not only to meet the growing demands of their customers today, but as well as being proactive and prepare for the future. It's projected that within the next three years, in 2023, there will be 31 billion devices that will be connected. Next slide please. As we've all experienced and seen with the impacts of COVID-19 this year, there's also an importance of wireless and a strong, having a strong and reliable network, especially in the fields of education and medical fields. And even tonight, having this PC hearing through a Zoom meeting, we all recognize the responsibility and the precautions that we need to take, but also understand that there's a need to continue business to keep moving. Next slide please. As staff provided this slide in their presentation, this slide shows the existing conditions of coverage in the downtown area. The middle of the slide that designates SCL Malibu does show that there is currently poor coverage in this area, north of Pacific Coast Highway, as well as south of Pacific Coast Highway and to the east and west of Cross Creek Road. Next slide please. This slide again shows what the coverage improvement would be if the proposed small cell facility went on air. You can see that there's good and improved coverage north of PCH as well as south of PCH all the way down to Malibu Lagoon State Beach and Park. There's also improved coverage and capacity to the east and west along PCH. Next slide please. And this slide just shows the coverage and signal provided by the small cell facility itself with the other existing facilities' layers being turned off. Next slide please. The Yukon team in collaboration with Verizon Wireless's team analyzed the RF's coverage objective area and the surrounding in order to find existing utility poles that we could collate, locate on based upon the policies and preference of the city of Malibu. We were able to identify three alternative candidates on existing streetlight poles in the surrounding area, all of which are located at the quadrants of Cross Creek Road and PCH, which are designated by the three yellow thumbtacks. Next slide please. These are the three alternatives that were designated by the thumbtacks, which are all SCE streetlight poles with signalized traffic lights. However, Alternative 1, which is to the northwest of PCH and Cross Creek Road, as well as Alternative 2, which is to the northeast of Cross Creek Road and PCH, both are along a scenic highway. Alternative 3, which is to the southeast, is even closer to Malibu Lagoon State Beach right at the entry. The issue with all three of these alternatives is that they're within 500 feet of what the city designates as a sensitive receptor, which is, again, Malibu Lagoon State Beach. Next slide please. Given that Yukon Group and Verizon designated the 500-foot radius around the sensitive receptors, and attempted to find candidates outside of that radius, which are depicted by the three red thumbtacks. Next slide please. Alternative 1 is a SCE streetlight that was 515 feet west of the existing proposed candidate and is also across from Parencio Golf Course. It is not the least intrusive or best candidate as the streetlight is, again, on a scenic highway, and... Alternative 2 is also another SCE streetlight that is 1,044 feet east of the current candidate and the coverage objective area. It also was not the least intrusive candidate as it's located on the same scenic highway. It's also proximate to Malibu Lagoon, which is another scenic area. Alternative 3, which is to the north of PCH, up Cross Creek Road, is about 812 feet from the current candidate and far from the coverage objective area, and again, was not superior to our proposed candidate. This wood streetlight pole would need to be replaced with a new concrete pole, and based upon the current location in the curved planter area would also need to be moved to the northeast per SCE guidelines. Additionally, the existing streetlight pole arm would need to be moved over Cross Creek Road instead of Civic Center as it currently is, which would also greatly diminish the lighting over the center of the intersection. This is also the only light at this intersection. The pole additionally couldn't be moved to the west on the other side of the Catch Basin due to an existing storm drain coming out of the Catch Basin and heading west under the parkway. Next slide please. Considering all of those six alternatives, it brought us back to the proposed candidate, which is still the most optimal to meet the RF engineers' coverage objectives, improving coverage and capacity to this area of the downtown, as well as being the least intrusive. It has reduced view impacts because it's on the land side of PCH and the furthest away from the sensitive receptor. Additionally, the associated equipment at grade is concealed within an equipment cabinet and is in existing parkway. The octagonal pole with the Omni antenna canister at the top would be painted gray to match and be compatible with the other existing streetlights. The proposed small cell facility is a clean design. It utilizes the least intrusive means for this location, and we respectfully request that the commission's approval, the commission approves the proposed project as recommended by staff. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Daisy Kim Pang with Verizon is also available, as well as Bill Hammett with Hammett &amp; Edison Engineers.
Okay, how much time do they have left?
Four minutes and 14 seconds.
Okay, reserve that for rebuttal, please. Who is the next speaker?
Lonnie Gordon.
Okay, can you turn them on?
I'm muted. Well, there's a lot to cover. First, I have to ask the commissioners, good evening. Did you receive my email to the prior agenda items? Did you get a chance to read them, my rebuttal to what's on the Planning Commission tonight? Can you hear me?
Yes, Richard, did we?
I sent them two weeks ago.
Yes, I did. This is a good one.
Okay, well, I'm going to try to sum this up, and I have four minutes to do this. I think I can do it in less than that.
You have to give three minutes, Lonnie.
Okay, Sonal, thank you for your input tonight. And how did you know the signal coverage was low? I'd like to know that. Did someone do a drive-by to figure that out? And if so, who? And the cell coverage will not be increased if 5G is substituted for the 4G chip that's supposedly going to be put in here. You said 3 billion devices will be covered by this. Well, that's not a 4G installation. It's for the Internet of Things. And when is this coverage to begin? We all, we who are in the opposite movement of installing, sorry, these new small cell site installations, all believe that 1,500 square feet is now what is suggested, not 500 square feet. That's way too close to the lagoon, it's way too close to the parks where the children play, it's across the street from buildings who are right across from the upper area of the tower. What I said in my previous email was, you've got a four-foot notice below the top of that tower that tells anyone who's working on it that it's dangerous. What about people who are trimming trees? What about the installation that's put on the sidewalk in the right-of-way to maintain this installation? I don't know if it's going to block the sidewalk or what, and what kind of signage is going to be put on that? And I am representing MalibuForSafeTech.org tonight, and we have serious concerns about any of these installations that are being installed. I'll stop at that.
Thank you. Who is next?
The next person we have is Nicole McGinn.
Okay, can you turn her on?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much. I was happy to read when I looked through this report how many questions were integrated into the report and addressed. So I'd really like to both thank city council for getting that notice to you, and then also for staff for really putting a look into these issues. I have to say that in reading this, thinking about this tower being across the street from a very well-used park, it has to be within 50 yards or less than that, maybe even 50 feet. It concerns me. I thought that we had a setback rule of 500 feet in our current ordinance for schools and parks, and I'm not sure why that is overridden by a gap in coverage when it comes to exposure to children. But if anything, it really points to me, to the need that our city has in updating our current ordinance. I would really, really like to encourage Planning Commission to reach out to council and ask them to please give you strong codes so that we can protect our community. This is very close to the lagoon. It is very close to that school, and that greatly concerns me. When I looked deeply into this plan, I saw the battery backup cage, I think it is, and it notes that it's going to be installed inside equipment on a cage on the sidewalk. And, you know, this is Malibu, this is our downtown, this is our shopping area that a lot of people have really put a lot of time and effort into updating and beautifying, and it really represents the charm and character of our city. And so to think about a battery, a backup battery, which sounds very important and useful, but being in a cage on the sidewalk, that does not feel like Malibu to me. And if I would oppose this installation just on the aesthetics of that being on the sidewalk, I'm sure there are ways that we can do better with this if this installation does in fact have to go through. I would like to see it done in a way that's tasteful with Malibu. I also, I just, I can't say enough how much it concerns me for this being close to children. This is, everybody knows this area that is in Malibu, and the kids from age 2 to 7 frequent that park regularly. They're there day in and day out, and having this big installation across the street is alarming. Thank you.
So we have Brian Embry as the last speaker prior to any rebuttal.
Hi, this is Ryan, and I know the area very well. I've lived within a mile of it for more than 30 years, and I actually helped Verizon in their predecessor years join onto a utility tower in front of the sheriff's station so that they didn't have to add poles or anything else in the civic center. And that facility had battery backup, big batteries, just racks of batteries in a building next to the sheriff's station, and a permanent onsite diesel generator. And that facility was essentially moved under city-approved TUP, its number 18-020. And that is for a facility at 23525 Civic Center Way, which is, you know, a couple hundred feet from the corner of the Whole Foods Market where you saw that one wooden streetlight pole that was discussed as an alternate location. You could probably see the Verizon facility, the transmitter, in the background of that picture, if you could put it back up. It is a two-sector cell and not a full three-sector cell, and that site should be modified and would cover the area flawlessly. And the area currently, I want to go on record, has seamless voice coverage and is therefore not eligible for substantial gap or any gap in any type of coverage that is requested by the applicant. So the alternative site, which is the elephant in the room, is the existing site Verizon has at 23525 Civic Center Way. And so the alternative analysis before you tonight is radically defective, and I hate to say that because the city has been on good terms with Verizon in the past, and it is simply the expediter firm and architectural firm that's before you tonight. My first question really would be for the record is, did Sonal Thakur drive, walk test, was she ever in Malibu on this project? Because there is no gap in coverage, there's no problem to be fixed. I would suggest that this is really a veiled attempt to compete with the other two wireline carriers for in-building internet data service. Those companies being Frontier California, which provides fiber optic in-building ultra-fast internet coverage, and Charter Spectrum, which has very similar high-speed capabilities. So there not being a problem, and there not being 1 billion cell phones in the neighborhood, there is not a need for this, and I challenge the poor coverage condition at all. The alternatives excluded any existing building top coverage. There should be opportunities on either the shopping center or the lumberyard, which is owned by the city of Malibu, for those locations. So I don't know what my time limit is, but I also don't understand the 7 gigabytes of smartphone data per use average from two years ago, which is, I believe, a very inaccurate recital of public relations at the beginning of this presentation. This is limited just to this one site, and the above-grade equipment violates the existing municipal code requirements. This application was not eligible for processing, and to bargain with the commission to underground the facilities is inappropriate waste of public time. I'd like to hear from the consultant if he has actually driven this area and found any gap in voice or even data coverage, I would say, for which would justify the need for this installation. The other is that there's plenty of opportunity insights on Pacific Coast Highway. The other is that there's plenty of opportunity in sites on Pacific Coast Highway, and they appear to be discarded by inappropriate criteria, as if somebody has to go up and change batteries every few months on these devices. There's existing hard poles in front of apartment structures on the south side of PCH in the area of where the budget rent-a-car, Hertz rent-a-car was, and in front of the the farmer's insurance agent there, standalone poles that don't seem to require a lot of service. And so I think it's important to note that a few hours of battery backup is not something to trade.
Ryan, your your time is up.
Dave, who's next?
We just have rebuttal time, 4 minutes and 14 seconds.
Okay, can you open their mic and see if there's any rebuttal?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Just to quickly address some of the questions, as far as there was a need for coverage in this area, Verizon's RF engineer collects data to determine where there is a need for a small cell facility. And at that point, then we go out to the facility, field candidates to see what is viable and what ultimately is the candidate that the Verizon RF engineer and team would like to move forward with in regards to the questions in regards to the emissions. I would like to defer that to Bill Hammett with Hammond and Edison.
Okay, is Bill's mic open?
Yes, it is. Thank you. My name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. I know Jonathan Kramer, who is also online, who is the city's consultant in this matter in terms of compliance with the federal safety standards. I've read in detail Lonnie's letter from earlier, and I won't take the time unless you want me to, to go through specific responses to specific statements that are not not quite correct. But the key point is that this facility will comply with the federal standard, that it is that is the threshold condition that an applicant has to show in order to gain preemption under federal law. And I'm sure your your city attorney will will back me up on that, or as will your your expert, Kramer. So that's really the key issue. There's concern expressed that levels at ground level might be high. They're not. They're in compliance. The sign on the pole is for workers on the pole itself, on a lift or a bucket truck or something getting up to that height. The trees are lower than the than the antenna in order for the antenna to propagate well. And so none of those concerns regarding RF emissions really come into play. It is a facility that meets the preemption criteria. And I'm happy to to continue with any further questions that you might have in that regard.
Well, we can ask those once we close the hearing. Does your side have anything else to say?
Daisy Weinkang with Verizon may want to speak to the questions in regards to the Civic Center small cell site.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Daisy Weinkang. I'm an employee of Verizon, municipal engagement partner for the city. And I would like to address the questions regarding the Malibu Civic Center location that we have near the library. So that location is indicated is a temporary location for Verizon as they are building the new sheriff's tower that's going to be on in front of City Hall. So while they're building that location, Verizon has relocated to that location temporarily to accommodate its subscribers in the area. The coverage and capacity that's being done by that facility goes east and west and does not cover the same area that this proposed Malibu 3 location would. So this proposed Malibu 3 location, if you look at the coverage maps that were provided to the city, the coverage will be basically going from Cross Creek across PCH all the way across the street towards the beach side of the city. So it covers a different area. And as indicated by Mr. Embry, there are two sectors, and the sectors are going east and west. Now, as far as once the tower for the Sheriff's Department is completed, which is slated currently, and this is a very, very soft approximate from what I have been told, about 2022, then Verizon will relocate back to the Sheriff's Tower. And at that point, we'll be serving, but the area of coverage and capacity would still be similar and the same. So I hope that addresses the questions with regards to that particular location, and I can answer further more questions should the commissioners want me to.
Thank you. Kathleen, do they have any more time?
30 or 29 seconds.
Do you wish to use your 29 seconds? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open it back up to the commission for questions. Jeffrey?
Yeah, for Ms. Thakur, you say that the Verizon RF engineer is the person who made the determination about the coverage gap. Who is that person?
The Verizon RF engineers, their first name is Simon. His last name unfortunately escapes me at this moment.
But he's not here tonight?
I do not believe he is.
So do you have anybody from Verizon or from your your team who can testify that, in fact, you walked or drove the area and and validated the existence of the coverage gap on voice?
Daisy, do you, I mean, Verizon RF engineers collect this data in order to propose these these projects in the first place? But Daisy, can you speak to Simon driving this area? I believe they do the drive, there's the drive test data that was collected.
Yes, I can answer that question, commissioners. So basically, what our RF engineering and not just the RF engineering team, but we also have a system performance team. So they frequently drive the area. In addition to our systems, basically, they do modeling to determine based on existing network and also the users and also the different times of which our users use the network. So even though at a particular moment in time, you may have good coverage, there might be times when there's a lot more people in the area, a lot more Verizon subscribers at the same time, like, for example, in the event of an emergency. And in those cases, you definitely need the additional coverage and capacity. So we don't just build for the particular moment in time that is the low end of use, but really for the high end of use. So our RF engineers work and use our tools and work with our system performance team to do that.
So I'm sorry, what you're telling me is that that you're not verifying a gap in voice coverage at any particular point in time? You're saying that hypothetically, there might be a lot more usage and a lot more people or maybe an emergency, in which case there would be a gap in coverage. Is that what you're telling me?
It's not just hypothetically, commissioners. There are circumstances, like, for example, you know, in areas where there's just a lot more traffic. For example, when people are leaving work at a particular time, driving through the same area, there's a peak and there's always highs and lows in the usage of the network, right?
Okay, so let me, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but what you're telling me is this is not a not a physically measured measured gap. It is something that you extrapolate from from traffic flows and so on. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you mean by major gap, commissioner.
Well, I mean, somebody walking down the street with a Verizon phone in their hand and not being able to get coverage. That's that I would consider to be a physically major gap. And you're telling me, from what I understand, you're telling me that, no, it's really based upon extrapolations of of traffic patterns and so on that 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 you project would exist under different circumstances.
Those are just some of the factors, Commissioner. We do, like I said, our system performance engineers do a drive test frequently and determine whether how the network is performing. I personally, myself, have been in that area downtown Malibu a few times when I've been pre-COVID. And I have been having, have had difficulty connecting. And of course, I have the latest and greatest Verizon equipment, and that was just at a normal time, and that was not necessarily at, you know, any peak time, so to speak. But what I am seeing is that our network is a living, breathing ecosystem, and we try to predict not just lows but also highs, right? So and what we've determined is that the current cell site that we have, which is the Malibu Civic Center temporary site on the north area towards Civic Center, that one does not provide enough coverage per the maps that our engineers have provided to this area.
Okay, if I could follow up, John, just with the line of questioning, can you open the mic for Dr. Kramer?
And good evening, Jonathan Kramer here.
Good evening, Dr. Kramer. You're the the city's consultant on these telecommunications issues, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you heard the last questions I was asking to the Verizon representatives. Have, to your knowledge, have has anybody physically verified the existence of the coverage gap in this area?
I'm not aware of anyone physically verifying it.
And you have not?
No.
Okay, thanks. Chris?
Yeah, just kind of going on a similar line along that way. The Verizon team, I think that was Daisy speaking, you were you were talking about, you know, trying to handle emergencies, 911 calls, et cetera. Our role in the planning commission is to balance our code against, you know, what the desires are for the applicant, et cetera. And just, I'm trying to get a little guidance, I think mainly from our attorney Donigan. Any guidance on what metrics we're supposed to hold kind of the signal strength to? Because to Commissioner Jennings' point, we don't have a clear metric. We need to handle X calls in, you know, this much bandwidth, the voice calls, what have you. I don't want to kind of muddy the water by talking about the fact we can't handle the old 10,000 people jammed on PCH. I'm assuming that Verizon gives priority to 911 calls, et cetera. You know, what what are kind of our minimums? Do we only have to meet a threshold of meeting residential needs? Do we need to meet these highest, you know, highest demands? What's what's the guidance there?
You know, you know, I I'm not aware of of any, as you said, specific metric. I know that that, you know, in in this in this arena, you know, as as the applicant, you know, stated, there there are severe federal preemption issues. So reviewing attachment four, which is kind of that 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 signal coverage map, you know, that has kind of been the the evidence presented that 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 they, you know, that they demonstrate that they, you know, need it here. So to my knowledge, no, there's no specific metric that you can go to to say, hey, you know, 10,000 calls must be dropped or et cetera like that. No, there's there's no metric.
Okay, and then, go ahead, sorry.
I, if I if I may add, Commissioner, just to kind of address the federal preemption issue as well, the recent FCC order that just came through for small cells merely requires that the carriers show that we are densifying our network. And technically speaking, the coverage maps as per that new 2018 FCC order is not even a requirement. But we have acquiesced because that's the city's municipal code and have provided it so that the city knows that there is a demonstrated need for this area.
Okay. And then and then a question to our representative, kind of our expert from the the city staff. I'm just looking at the topography of this area kind of from the library out towards the proposed cell site. And, you know, topography is flat. We've got buildings between, you know, the the kind of the this existing temporary cell on the library to the PCH. My own, you know, experience, I've never had a call drop driving along there. I'm on Verizon. I'm on my cell probably 70% of the time I drive through there. I'm just kind of curious from from your expectation, if we increase the power or and or the angle of, you know, from an east-west orientation, just added some other orientation, what kind of southwest, what have you, in a sufficient power to kind of blanket that area, could we get kind of coverage that, in your opinion, would be, you know, sufficient for to meet the federal requirements and still and not have to kind of, you know, continue to expand the number of towers in the area there?
Kathleen, can you open up Dr. Kramer's?
He's muted.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, thank you for unmuting me. A couple of points which I think will be helpful for all of the commissioners. Number one, in answer directly to Commissioner Mark's question, we're not allowed to control their technology. So what you've asked is not something that we're legally able to do. We're in the aesthetics business, and that's really where the federal courts have led us to. In terms of significant gap, the leading cases online came out of the San Francisco area in the early 2000s, and basically, the federal courts have told us that a significant gap is not something that can be subject to a bright line test. It's a test based on local conditions, and the courts have never been able to tell us what specifically a significant gap is. Some courts have said a significant cap can be found if there's not signal service in one home. So it's it's an extremely low standard. So the the real area of most jurisdictions now is in aesthetics. And finally, I'll provide one additional comment which may be helpful, which is that there's no more difference between voice and data. The networks are unified and a packet of one moment could carry a bit of a telephone call and the next moment a bit of a data call, a data screen. So the the days of having separate frequencies for for voice versus data are gone. I hope those are helpful in your decisions tonight.
Yeah, and just just to kind of touch on one point you made earlier, the aesthetics aspect. We have as in terms of kind of controlling that aesthetic, we can kind of group these towers or the kind of the cells in an area. That's one kind of lever that we as a city have to try to simplify that aesthetic, correct? Like, so in other words, I'm not trying to dictate how to control their technology, but to say, if you've got a site, which is two sites, which could reasonably triangulate in on the area in question, can't we just ask that you you update the power there, the orientation there to address that issue rather than introduce the aesthetic of a new site?
Interestingly, increasing power is often detrimental to a wireless network. The network requires effectively a balance between the signal levels so that as you drive down a street, you're not bouncing from one site to the next site to the next site simply because one is substantially louder, if you will, from signal strength. So that the networks tend to be balanced, and sites like this provide typically provide a relatively small area of coverage in an area where there is either insufficient signal strength, which I don't believe is the issue here, or insufficient capacity to make the calls.
Thank you.
Chris, I want to get Dr. Kramer while he's on. The, we're looking at another site on the next hearing. We have, it's 28 feet tall. And this one, we have to have a variance to make it taller. They're both on telephone poles. Is there a specific reason why it has to be taller?
I'm happy to give you an answer now. You may want to have it when you get to the other hearing for the record for there, but to compare the two, the word that we use is clutter. In the current planning case before you right now, there aren't a lot of close-up things that are going to interfere with the signal, not even the adjacent trees. In the case that'll be coming before you later on BURVIEW, the issue is the structures that are around and looking over, if you will, looking over the top of them. That's kind of the the top-level view of why heights sometimes are important and sometimes less important.
Well, in this case, this side is the taller side. So specifically, is there a reason why this one has to be so tall, since our buildings tend not to be over 28 feet?
I don't have that answer.
Okay, let me ask you another question. On on their their coverage maps, they have a map that says Verizon coverage without SCL Malibu 3. And it shows poor coverage of the shopping center to the to the east. Then we look at the combined and we add SCL 3. And there's only a narrow strip going down Cross Creek Road that increases. going down Cross Creek Road that increases coverage. And then all the rest is still considered poor or, um, fair. Is there a reason why this tower has less than 50 feet coverage, uh, going, uh, east and west?
The, the dominant purpose of this site based on the coverage maps is actually to the south towards the lagoon area. Uh, it, the, the, there isn't a substantial amount of coverage to the north or to the east. I'm sorry, to the north or really to the north. Um, there is coverage to the south and to the west and east. But the rest of your question would really be best delivered to Verizon for an answer.
Okay, but, uh, just technically. If we wanted to have coverage for our main shopping area for Malibu, uh, is there a reason why we approve this or tell them we don't want to cover a body of water? We want to cover where probably 90% of the people are?
Again, that's an engineering decision that they make and it's really, it's outside of our purview, uh, because it is technical.
Okay, but you, you could, what I'm asking is you can't have the tower go in a circle and cover, cover both areas.
I suspect, and it's only a suspicion, but I suspect the answer will be that the existing temporary site, uh, it would cause interference with the signals from that site. But that's, that's only an estimate. Again, Verizon is best equipped to give you that answer.
Okay, uh, could I have asked Daisy a question then? Daisy, uh, on your SLC map three, Malibu three, you show new coverage covering the lagoon, uh, Surf Rider Beach and a little bit of Coast Highway and not Malibu West or any of our shopping centers. Is there a reason why you're not covering the shopping centers? And especially the building directly across the street?
So Commissioner, um, we are covering a part of the shopping center there, but not like, uh, entirely. And some of it's also being picked up by Malibu Civic Center, but not a whole lot. The main goal of this particular site is to cover PCH and the area, um, close there as well as the homes that are across the street from PCH going towards the lagoon area.
Well, those, well, my real question is, we're approving a site for this area and we're leaving out all our shopping centers. Uh, which is where everybody is. There's only like 200 homes within the coverage area. It's, it's, the rest of it's ocean. So why did you choose, for example, the building directly across the street, which is 50 feet away? Why did you choose to eliminate that or the shopping center directly next to it? Which is, is our major shopping center, our biggest one.
From my understanding, um, from our RF engineers, this will actually provide in-building coverage, meaning inside the buildings as well. So in the shopping area, so you should be able to experience better coverage and capacity in those locations. Now, the map itself, um, perhaps is not as detailed as it could be where it would depict specific buildings. But it does, um, from, from my conversation with our engineers, it would cover, um, and improve in-building coverage, means that, meaning inside the building and also inside cars, um, for this area that it's, that's showing green right now.
Okay, now, um, explain to me why it's easier to get a signal inside of a building instead of outside of a building?
It's not easier. It's actually the opposite. We, we're trying to improve the inside building, um, coverage and capacity right now, and that's why we're adding, um, this particular location.
But your map shows the buildings and it shows them as poor after you add this thing. And these buildings are literally, you throw a tennis ball from that pole and hit them. So, uh, why would the city want coverage of a tiny little strip of the highway and a body of water and a state park that has limited use? Versus our whole shopping centers?
But, eh, um, and, and Chair Maza, and I, I apologize, you know, the, the Verizon representative can answer that question. Um, I did just want to reiterate what, what Dr. Kramer did say, that, 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 that we're getting a bit off, you know, the, the purpose of this is not to question their technology, their maps, their, 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 their decisions on, on coverage. The, the issue really here is, is aesthetics, is, is whether or not the aesthetics of this facility are, are, you know, I don't want to say appropriate, but, but, but acceptable to the, to the commission. Not whether it's, it's, it gets this building and, and not another building, nor does it get, you know, as you said, some, some ocean or some, or some road and, and not other places. That's not really what is before.
Well, I mean, I beg to probably disagree with you, and that is that we're told that we have to approve this because there's a gap there. And you're not filling the gap. So isn't that the purpose?
But, 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 but that is, that, that, that is really, you know, in, in this instance, the, the applicant's determination is, a, a, as Dr. Kramer said, it's a very, you know, I, I don't want to say weak standard, but, 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 but the standard is not, you know, a demonstrative, you must be able to hit X. It, it, that, that's not what's before the planning commission. And so it, yeah.
Well, so you're saying that they can come in and say, we want to fill the gap, but we're not going to fill it.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, my.
I'm saying, I'm saying.
And I don't, and I'm trying to understand the technology where you're 50 feet from a pole and you can't get a signal. And that's what they're showing on their map.
And, and what's in those, those questions, you know, Verizon, it, it should answer that. And, and of course, I just want to just, just caution the, the, the commission that, that getting into this level of technical detail is, i- 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 is not advisable.
Well, my, my second question would be, we're asked to give a variance to make this pole higher than, than allowed. So we need to ask why? I mean, if, if this tower can be 28 feet, we don't have to make that variance. If it has to be 32, I need a reason.
I can answer some of them.
And, and, and also the other reason I would want is why does the equipment have to be above ground instead of below ground? So those are, I guess, two questions for Daisy.
Yes, um, let me address, um, the, the coverage issue as well. Um, if we go back, uh, to the maps, um, there's also an improvement from, uh, if you look at, it goes on where you have the green area in the middle there where a small cell, uh, Malibu three is. Um, when you include, uh, Malibu three, that also becomes a bit yellow. So it goes from poor to, um, fair in some areas. So it may not necessarily be showing up as green, but it is showing an improvement, um, from poor to fair. So it does help, um, some of those areas in, in there. Now, to answer your question regarding the height, um, as mentioned by staff, uh, this pole is this existing, um, Southern California Edison pole. Southern California Edison has certain requirements and certain heights that we can go by. And, um, so in order for us to be, um, consistent with the poles in the area, this is the pole that is the closest to Southern California Edison's height. The next pole height would have been 23 feet. Um, and also in addition to that, Southern California Edison has certain seismic requirements that we have to follow specifically for the Malibu area. So a lot of, as far as the height goes also, um, is there an option that, um, I believe, uh, was also mentioned by staff? Is that if we were not to replace an existing pole, we would, we could place a new pole in this area and that would be, that could be at the 28 foot height, but we did not want to add a new pole in the public right of way in this area. So what we have opted is that is the least intrusive option of, um, replacing an existing SCE streetlight. So I hope that.
So you're saying that you could put another pole in at a lower height, but the streetlight has to be the, the, the height it is plus what you want to add on top of it. You can't have a 23 foot streetlight.
Um, it would not be consistent with all the other streetlights in the area if we put a, a 23 foot, uh, Southern California Edison on streetlight. In addition to that, with, if the height were to be lowered to that, we would probably not achieve the correct RF objective. And I'm, I'm just saying probably because we did not run the numbers for the 23 foot height. Um, we just ran it for the height that we have.
Okay, and is there a reason why your equipment has to be above ground?
The equipment has to be above ground, Commissioner, because pretty much they have to transmit. And, um, in order for our equipment antennas specifically to transmit, they would have to be above ground. Um, as far as, um, the radio, remote radio units, there are definite, uh, challenges in this area if we are to underground it. Um, there's probably not enough space in the public right of way is one. Um, secondly, uh, the radio, uh, signal would be severely degraded. And there would be other issues as well that comes with undergrounding, um, wireless equipment. So, um, but, you know, that's not something that, um, we are proposing because of this particular location. This is the least intrusive option.
Now, can you explain, do, do all the, do all your other, uh, poles in Malibu have their equipment above ground? Cause I haven't noticed them in, uh, down by Carbon Beach.
For the most part, um, our installations are above ground, yes.
Okay, but there are exceptions, correct?
Um, I did not do a survey specifically in Malibu, uh, Commissioner, so, um, so I could not like definitively answer that question.
Okay, and if it was below ground, how would it degrade the signal since the signal's coming from the top of the pole?
So the signals are not just coming from the antennas, but also from the radios. The radios themselves, the, are what we call the RRU units are what generates the airwaves. And so once you put that underground, um, there's a definite degradation of signal. I'm not a vault expert, but, um, that's, that's not some, that's something that, um, comes with a whole host of, uh, technical challenges that Verizon would have to, um, handle. Um, and it's not necessarily for, especially for this location where there's a lot of traffic and not enough space in the public right of way for us to do that.
So you're saying putting a vault above ground in the public right of way uses less space than putting it below the ground?
Above ground? No, um, it, well, what we're proposing is not a vault, Commissioner. We're proposing just, um, a battery backup unit and a pedestal. So it's essentially similar to the pedestals that you see in the area. Um, and it would be, uh, painted to match, uh, painted green to match the area.
Okay, and the battery backup cannot go below ground?
Um, the battery backup unit is not proposed to go below ground. Uh, we have not studied it to go underground. Because it is definitely a new amenity that Verizon is, um, proposing to the city of Malibu as a response to the request from the city on resiliency efforts. So this is something that we were, um, specifically, it's pretty much was designed to, to, um, assist, uh, upon staff requests for resiliency.
Okay, do you have any other battery backup units in your system that are below ground?
Below ground, to my knowledge, no, there are no, actually, this is going to be the first small cell with a battery backup unit. Um, we have macro towers or macro cell sites like, um, the one that's going to be back at the sheriff's station. That macro location will have a permanent generator. That is the battery backup for that. Um, and that's different.
Okay, and they can't be pole mounted?
Uh, pole mounted, no, sir.
Okay, and, um, is there a reason why you have to use SCE poles instead of installations on buildings? Or private property?
So we do have installations on private property, but for this particular type of wireless solution, it's been determined that it's best to, um, install in an existing, um, streetlight in the public right of way. So we're not adding additional furniture in the public right of way.
Well, I'm, what I'm asking is there's probably 20 buildings in an area that have roofs on them that are approximately 28 feet high or up to 33. And can you put a, a, a unit on a building at the same height and get the same effect?
Um, not necessarily the same effect. I mean, we, we would have to see about, first of all, we'd have to determine if the landlord would even be amenable to having a wireless facility. Secondly, we'd have to look at the structural integrity of the roof. Thirdly, we'd have to see if, um, there's enough of a signal that you can get the same quality when you have one pole with, uh, the sectors, um, facing different directions. Um, there's no obstruction, uh, right now, uh, for this particular pole. If we were to locate on a rooftop, there's other factors like the ones I mentioned that we'd have to take into consideration.
Okay, and the second, the last question here is you've got two other competitors that are upgrading. Obviously, everybody's upgrading because the dirty word 5G is coming. And so is every competitor eventually going to take up every light pole in Malibu with something on top of it, or can somebody else co-locate on that same pole with you?
So I cannot speak for what my, uh, what our other competitors are doing and as to what their network needs are. So I can't really answer that part of the question. But with regards to colocation on an existing streetlight that has already a wireless, uh, carrier, um, it's very difficult to do that because of the heights at 28 feet. You'd have to have separation between the antennas. Plus, you also have to take into consideration the cumulative effects on RF exposure. So there's going to be all sorts of different, uh, factors that come into play. But also the integrity of the pole would be another question. Um, typically SCE, um, the ones I've seen anyway, I've not seen two on, on an SCE pole, uh, two carriers, but, um, that's not usually how SCE allows us. And again, as I mentioned earlier, there's seismic restrictions, um, specifically for Malibu as well.
So, and this is for Dr. Kramer if he's there, um, can you unmute him? And Dr. Kramer, if, if we've got, we don't have that many light poles in Malibu. Say we have 200. Are we going to run out of poles?
No, you won't run out of poles, but you will see more, uh, on poles. And to the question of whether there's colocation possible on light standards, um, Edison, and we, we work with Edison all the time. I, I can tell you that Edison is not allowing colocations on their poles and they can deny that. Now, wood utility poles are a different matter, but that's not the subject of, of this hearing.
Okay, so, uh, I, I want you to just, we're, we're amateurs at this. So if this question is really stupid, let me know, but, um, is there, should we be concerned as planning commissions for all of Malibu that by granting one vendor X pole, we are discriminating against another vendor who's going to come in a month from now? Or two months from now and want to be in that area?
Federal law denies us the ability to quote, "unreasonably discriminate," unquote. So it really becomes a question of fact and it's hard to give you a, 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 a straight and specific answer. But, but more to the point is you have an applicant before you who has both federal and state rights, state rights as a telephone corporation. So they have a right to be in the right of way, whether it's with their own pole or with others. If, following your hypothetical, if the city ran out of poles, uh, it would be certainly within the authority of the telephone companies to start, to stake more poles in the right of way. Uh, subject to the safety considerations as to physical safety and uh, not causing landslides and things like that.
Okay, and then the last one, then I'll give it to somebody else. We're not talking 5G here, as I understand it, but I, I can't really tell if we are or not. But as my understanding that 5G requires a shorter distance between poles. And if we have three vendors with 5G in Malibu, do you have any idea of how, how many, either a factor or the number of how many new installations we're talking about?
Um, first off, 5G doesn't always require closer spacing. Some of the frequencies that will be used for 5G are, are the same general frequencies that are used now. Some of them will be higher and will not travel as far. But when a wireless engineer looks at designing a network, um, they look at really topography and, and here, like, I, I spent years living and working in Malibu, so, and I know the city pretty darn well. Um, here, there are an unusual set of circumstances. We have portions of the city where, on the, um, for the southern or the western end of the city effectively, um, southern end. um, southern end. Yeah, you've only got construction on one side of the street. Um, so that presents a different set of challenges. As soon as you go up into the hills, you've got rapidly changing topography. Uh, so Malibu will not be a normal type of flatland deployment for even four G small cells, much less five G. The overarching answer, however, is that there will probably be more small cells in Malibu simply because of the things that I've said, the topography and the unusual nature of the layout of the homes. So these are factors, but not answers to your question.
Okay, and then, then is there a technical reason why a battery cannot be undergrounded?
Um, no, the issue of undergrounding is an issue of cost and reliability. Uh, there's definitely a reliability issue where the reliability will go down, but not to zero. And the cost will go up. As for the cost issues, I'm generally, generally what I say is, these are facilities that are gonna be in the right of way for decades and decades. So there's a long time to recoup the investment. On the other hand, they have no obligation to do standby power at these sites. So those are some of the pluses and minuses. I suspect that the economics of the site construction will factor into whether they ultimately do provide standby power at the site, which is not their obligation.
Okay, thank you. And does anybody else have questions? Steve?
Yeah, a couple.
That's Steve.
Uh, yes. I mean, this is a really amazing conversation. We've got, the, the, Verizon's come in and they've done a study that says that there's missing coverage, but they don't tell you how they do the study and all. They give you a little green diagram that says this is proof without any definition of how all this stuff happens, which I just think is amazing. But I have to do a question. Let's, let's, let's do aesthetics. Uh, what is Verizon's plan over the next year in terms of the towers they've gotta put within, between, I don't know, Ca- or Malibu Canyon and Cross Creek Road? What, what is your plan? How many more towers are we looking at? Where are they gonna be located? Do you know that? Because it seems to me that part of our, if we're dealing with aesthetics, part of our job sort of says, what's this gonna look like? And can we suggest that maybe there should be something over here versus over there? Versus letting you guys decide where all this stuff goes? So you have any, do you have a plan or a diagram or a something that says, here's what your year-long, two-year-long plan looks like?
Um, Commissioner, we've submitted a lot of applications already to the city. Um, so the applications that we have submitted, um, show where the network needs are.
No, no, I, I understand what we've got in front of us. I'm talking about your future plans and say, here's where I'm gonna put, here's where I'm gonna need towers. That's what I wanna know. Because if we're dealing with aesthetics, it seems to me that one of the things we should be looking at is what is the overall impact you're gonna have on our community? And we may decide there's a better way to put some of these things to help give us a better pers- pers- you know, protection of the community we're representing here. So, but then, Patrick, I'm like, so where is that listing? Where is that diagram? Where is that plan?
So I don't have a plan that I can show you here today because the network is a living and breathing.
Because I understand, living, but you guys are, it's your, it's your system. Somebody has gotta plan this thing out. You're not doing these one-off. You wake up in the morning, say, I need a new one. Somebody's gotta be looking over the horizon someplace to do that. So I'd like to get a copy of that plan because I think we need that to be able to make a good decision about the aesthetic impacts of this thing. Second thing, you, um, you talked about putting it, we were, somebody mentioned about putting it on top of a building. And I guess the concern says, geez, is the building strong enough that, that? Well, right across, right next to you, wh- where this tower is going across the street is the Malibu lumberyard. It was just redone. It had a whole bunch of construction going on there, so the building is solid as a rock. Why haven't you looked about putting it on top of that building? Or have you, and what, why aren't you doing it? It would get it out of, out of the street. It would get this additional cage, whatever it has you putting in there, uh, away from the people's view. I mean, it would be a much more aesthetically pleasing situation, solution. Why aren't we doing that?
And the landlord is?
You know, look, I'm not. That's, that's got nothing to do with, the question is, is that a better location?
Or equal?
Uh, make it better, tie her up. Make, you know, ma- it may make the signal better for them. Did you look at that? And what's the answer on that? What was your analysis when you looked at that?
So when, when we fielded this location, we fielded them for small cells because
What did you look at when you looked at putting it on the roof? What was your conclusion there?
I don't believe that this particular group, when we fielded this location, we weren't looking for a macro cell site. We were looking for a small cell. And it's the technology that is determining this factor. And, and that's why we're proposing a small cell in this location.
I understand, but you're not answering the question. The question is, did you look in putting it on the roof? And what was your analysis, conclusion when you did that?
What I'm trying to say, Commissioner, is that for this particular project, we did not look at the Malibu rooftop.
Okay, so aesthetically, that rooftop solution would be much better than the putting it on the street, I believe, okay? And I don't know if that gives us a reason to have them go back and take a look and give us a, an analysis of that before they move forward. Somebody, Dr. Jonathan, you may have to tell us if we're heading down a direction of, I'm just, you know, blowing smoke over here.
Well, and I'd, I'd weigh in just, just in terms of context of what Commissioner hearing is saying. Our code seventeen four six one two O does talk about location. And in our code, it says wherever possible, facility should be located on and or inside existing structures, including buildings. So, you know, it is, it is a consideration we have to weigh in our decision here, especially on the aesthetics. And especially in the unique case where we've got this cluster of buildings right where we need the signal. So it's nonsensical to me to say, oh, we'll put up a really tall pole and really blow up the aesthetic right in your most valuable part of your town. Put it on top of the building, get it away, get it out of the site and, and have all the signal you need. And it's, it's right in line with the corridor you've established in your, in your coverage.
And it's right in line with our general plan, with our mission statement that says we're gonna preserve the community. I mean, what you're doing is going against all of the stuff the city has spent all these years trying to maintain. So
And so, so the question to Dr. Kramer is, is there a reason why not? Your considerations shouldn't be taken into consideration?
First off, um, buildings themselves are not a prohibition to small cells. In fact, as a representative landlord, I've, I've actually leased buildings to Verizon for small cells.
Cool.
That, that's not the consideration. Typically, the factors that come into play is how much rent will the landlord charge? And then some of the issues that Daisy has raised about whether there's suitable signal coverage. So, um, there are a number of factors that go into whether it is viable. In the public right of way, for their own polls, they actually don't pay anybody rent. They have a, uh, there's a, a, a very, uh, a clear state rule that says that we can't charge them to rent the right of way from us. In this case, they're not renting the right of way from us. They're, uh, renting access to the S E E pole. And that's certainly permissible. But there are both technical and financial factors that come into play as to where I believe a wireless carrier will wanna cite small cells. But there's no physical or technical prohibition from being on top of a building.
Right, and I don't know, you know, we don't know what the rental property may be, if there's a charge. The city may say, geez, I'm better off getting it off the street and allowing them to put it up there. Who knows? But they've gotta ask. Without asking, you're never gonna find out.
Well, let me ask you this.
John, John, I'm not done. I mean, so they, they've gotta ask. And it, is that not, is that not a legal or a reasonable thing for us to ask them to do? Doctor?
You can ask them to expand their alternative sites analysis.
Okay.
The question, and, and here's the important question, and this, this has come up in court cases that have been decided. The question will be availability. And, uh, the fact that a building might be available at ten thousand dollars a month um, versus a, another location at much less will, will factor in. So it's not a slam dunk. But if you want to ask them to expand their, uh, their analysis to that, it wouldn't be outside the realm.
That's a legitimate thing for us to do.
Chris, if you, if you believe that there are less intrusive sites that they have not considered, the courts have allowed for limit, this is not an unlimited thing. You can't go back and say, well, what about this building? What about this building? And shine the next time. But if, if there is a viable alternative that you can identify as a reasonable person, then it's within the realm of asking them to go back and evaluate that.
I'm the most reasonable person you're ever gonna need.
Chris, are you done?
I got one more point to just, I just wanted to bring up to you guys. You know, going from four G to five G, all right? They're not gonna come back to us when they do that. They change a chip or do something in the, in the transmitter that cranks that thing up. So we get, I mean, looking down the road, we just gotta make sure they, they can crank it up to five G and never tell us they're doing that. Doesn't impact this, but I would like to make a motion at the end that we send these guys back, have them do an alternative site analysis. Let's take a look at what it looks like. They can come back and tell us. It doesn't work, but at least we've explored it.
Okay, uh, Chris?
I, I just wanted to Yeah, I just wanna get quick, quick feedback from Dr. Kramer as far as, are we obligated to kind of minimize their costs versus our adverse effects, you know, impacts? You, you called that ten thousand dollar example, you know, is there any, you know, it, it kind of feels like the, uh, flip of what we just talked about. There's no clear definition of what exactly a weak signal is. But you know, when you see it, it seems like, I'm gonna guess it's a similar argument on what a minimum cost is that has to be considered against adverse impacts?
Yep, you pretty much nailed it.
Okay, so, so by asking them to study it, you know, we'll have to then have a conversation, hey, this is our change in costs. Well, that seems reasonable to us. Yeah.
Yeah, at least we all understand.
Okay, uh, Jeff.
Just got a question.
Yeah, um, I wanted to know, I, I guess Daisy would be the person for this. You mentioned that, that, uh, the, the, the main transmitter would be back in place in twenty twenty-two. What happens to this site, uh, when, uh, when that happens? Does this, does this, do you dismantle this and take it away, or does it stay on the pole? Uh, what happens then?
Are you referring to the temp site that would be relocated to the sheriff's, um,
Right, correct.
Or the sheriff's tower? Um, from my understanding, we'd be keeping this location, um, as far as, uh, we would reassess. We constantly reassess the network. So at that point, we'll probably take a look at the network needs at that point and decide whether it's gonna be needed or not. But more than likely, um, we will be keeping this location. Because they serve different areas, so.
I, I have, make one last point that I, I, I just feel like I have to make. Appreciate the fact that, you know, of a, of a two-hour backup. In the event of an emergency like we experienced in the Woolsey fire, that's nothing. Uh, power was out four days. And let me tell you, as somebody who evacuated from my home with my horses and my dog and went down to Zuma Beach, and there were a ton of us there, and the, the trauma that everyone was experiencing was bad enough. But it was only multiplied by the fact that nobody could contact anybody, that nobody could reach their husbands or their wives or whoever they might be. And, and that made things just orders of magnitude worse. And so, uh, to me, this whole thing is an issue of public safety. Uh, I, 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 I know it's, you know, city's not gonna be able to do it. Uh, state's probably not gonna be able to do it until the federal government, uh, gets in gear. Uh, nobody's gonna be able to change the situation. But the idea that you guys can come in and put these facilities in place and, and knowing as you do, that as soon as the power goes out, everything goes down, uh, is just I, I, I don't even know how to describe it. It's just, it, it's just not acceptable human behavior. But, um, I know there's nothing I can do about it, so.
Well said, Jeff. I'd like to make a motion.
Well, let me ask one last question of Dr. Kramer on that, that, uh, subject. Uh, can you unmute him? And I'm Dr. Kramer, I, I don't know where I read it, but I, I read something about the state. I don't think it was the feds mandating some kind of backup on cells. Is that, is that in the works or is it in effect or, uh, am I crazy?
Um, you're not crazy. Uh, Assembly Bill twenty-four twenty-one was signed into law a couple of weeks ago by the governor that provides for an expedited permitting process, but not for this type of facility. Uh, the expedited processing for standby generators is for the large towers, the macro cell sites, as Daisy described them. So this site would not be covered under A B twenty-four twenty-one. But the answer is the state is moving towards an expedited process because of the wildfires to allow for the installation of various types of generators at the big and therefore the key sites.
Okay, so, uh, if that happened, they, they would have to come back for another permit?
Uh, that permit would not be available for this site because this site would not qualify because of the type of site it is. It, it's only for, I'm trying to think of some examples. Uh, well, like at the sheriff's station, a big macro cell that provides a large area of coverage. Um, that, those, it, it's limited as to its scope. And that law, by the way, goes into effect on January first next year, and it's only in place for three years. So it's, it's a limited timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make my motion?
Sure, and nobody has any other questions, right? Okay, go for it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that says I'd like to, uh, continue this. Have them come back with an analysis that says what are the impacts if they were located on top of a roof? And if they can't pick a roof, they should take a look at the Malibu lumberyard, and that's an aesthetic issue. And the second thing I'd like to include is have them come back with a, a site map that says over the course of the next year and a half, between Malibu Canyon and, and, uh, Cross Creek, what are the additional towers they're putting up again, so we can take a look at the aesthetics of this thing and make sure we're doing the right thing for the city?
Okay, I'll second that. I have a question to read you. Do you have a backlog of applications for towers? And is that, is that backlog available for us to know?
It, it would be, uh, you know, through a public records request, anybody could look to see the number of applications that we have. These applications, and Tyler usually ends up taking these in, so he could speak to the exact numbers. But there are points in time where they will submit, um, was it Tyler, about twenty applications at once?
Yeah, they usually come in bunches. Um, right now, we have about, I wanna say thirty roughly, not all Verizon. Um, but that's how much, how much applications we're currently processing at the, at the moment for wireless.
Is it possible to put in our, uh, request, uh, you provide us with a map of those? You don't have to identify who they are or anything.
Well, I, I've mapped them out and I'll, I'll be happy to provide that for you.
Okay, I'd also like to, Steve, uh, ask you to, uh, have an analysis of undergrounding the above-ground facilities on the street to eliminate filling over a sidewalk with a, a big, big box. Is that okay?
Hasn't, uh, Dr. Kramer told us that we can't? You can't, yeah.
Can't what?
Technology. Can't play with the technology, right?
No, it's not technology, it's undergrounding. It's a, is a vault or above ground? No, it's just cement. And a lid.
They'll do it, I don't have a problem.
Okay, uh, so you've amended it to that. Chris, do you have any amendments you want?
Just don't let us do, don't let us do something which is going to give them an option to ignore us. I mean, let's just keep this as, as narrow as we have to, to make sure we come back and we get the answer we want. And we're doing this thing correctly because there's a whole bunch of these federal rules which will come in here.
Oh, no, I've just seen towers that don't have boxes above ground.
All right, I'm just, I'm just wanna be careful.
Okay, Chris?
I just wanted to clarify. I know, um, we've asked it, Tyler, bring together what has been submitted so far. I would just reiterate to, uh, I think most appropriately Daisy and team, even though this is a living network, whatever your teams are starting to line up for kind of where additional sites are being considered, again, to address the aesthetics, so we can start to look at, like, like in my book. But what I think we want to be smart about in, in reviewing this is where are areas we should immediately ask? Put that on top of a building, figure it out, because you got a lot of buildings right there. And then this other area, okay, you gotta use poles. Okay, so put priority on that park or whatever it might be. So we can start to influence those, those sites. put priority on that park or whatever it might be. So we can start to influence those, those sites because the five or six that were picked, if we had seen those six months ago, we could have preempted this, um, kind of run around. So that, that's where my head is. And so even though Tyler is gonna get the basics of what's already been submitted, if you can make a best effort of what you can foresee would be kind of the footprint, then we can start to help, uh, hopefully contribute there to help the aesthetic.
Okay, David and Jeff, do you have anything to add?
No.
Let's call a question.
Did you get a second on the motion?
Yeah, I second.
There were two seconds, yeah.
So are we bringing back this resolution or just?
Uh, do you want a, a date?
What do you think? You just tell them we want to continue, have them come back with that information?
Yeah, we need a date for them to come back. We don't want to renotice it. Richard, do you have the, uh, openings?
Can Daisy tell us how long she's gonna need?
Yeah, because it might be just best to renotice it because I, I think that you're asking for information and additional studies from uh, the, the applicant there to go around and basically, uh, ask landlords. I don't know how quick they can do that.
Okay, uh, so, uh, the motion is to a date uncertain. Can we take a vote?
Yes, Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're now off to proceed.
The next one. You want to take five minutes? We still have time to get to 7:00 before 10:30?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind it. Uh.
We gotta continue the, um, 5 A. Uh, we're not gonna get to 5 A tonight, guys.
Okay, you want to just give them a break and, okay, uh, do you have a motion to continue to fi- 5 A to the next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
11:02, uh, at Fitz, Richard?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, do we have a second? Chris seconds it. Uh, maybe a roll call, please?
Carefully silent.
Apologies. Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll take a break until five, us, five minutes from now, 10:10.
Done. Thanks, guys.
Everybody shut off your, whatever you do.
Well said, John.
Not too technical, John.
Surprisingly non-confrontational.
Who was non-confrontational?
All of us.
Hey, Steve, I think if a ghost, your chair was just spinning when I came up. I was like, who the heck spun his chair?
I faded away after about 10:15.
He's always spinning.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Next meeting the night before the election?
Yes.
Oh, good man.
Yeah.
The night before the revolution, you should say.
Wow. Ever the optimist, John.
Real question is whether the World Series will be over by then.
Hmm.
I guess it will.
Really? That fast? They, they don't have any days in between?
I don't know. I think there's like one break, one. I didn't even know where they're playing. I guess they're, they're gonna be in Texas or something.
This pretty gay game last night. I watched to the last minute.
Yeah. You moved down into your other position, Chris.
Yeah, why do you, uh, there twice, Chris?
Uh, my headphones, my headphones work better on one computer and my monitor is only on the other one. So.
Oh, okay.
I mix it up.
Too high tech. Okay, oh, who are missing? Nobody?
Yeah, we're good.
Do it, John. Go ahead.
We have everybody, right? Chris, you, me, okay. Uh, can we call it to order? Okay, I'm calling to order the planning commission, uh, item 4C, wireless communication facility number 15 dash 004, coastal development permit number 17 010, site plan review number 15 012, application to install a new wireless communication facility, 20 foot tall pole and electrical support equipment continued from October 5th, uh, 2020, location 7361 point five Bervue Avenue. I've never seen a point five before. Um, and we have a staff report.
Yes, we do. Uh, good evening, Chair Mazza and members of the planning commission. The item before you, uh, consisted of the installation of a new utility pole in the public right of way in order to attach a wireless antenna and electrical support equipment. At the last meeting, the commission voted to continue the item, uh, to tonight's, uh, hearing due to public comments received just before the meeting. Uh, the agenda report and supplemental report address these comments in more detail. In brief, the, uh, public comments, uh, state concerns related to Esha nearby, uh, residents and the western snowy Plover. I think it's important to mention that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with, uh, FCC requirements for the maximum permissible exposure limits of radio frequency emissions. Uh, pursuant to a, uh, radio frequency emissions report prepared by the applicant's RF engineer, the max, the ma- maximum, uh, radio frequency generated by the proposed antenna is point nine percent of the, uh, FCC's maximum permissible exposure. Uh, the nearest existing residence is approximately 63 feet from the pole, uh, and other alternative locations would have placed the antenna much closer to surrounding residents. Uh, also, the local coastal program requires a 100 foot buffer from Esha. The proposed facility is much, uh, farther away than 100 feet from Esha, and the project side is an already disturbed parkway in the public right of way. Uh, next slide, please. The facility is located at the northwest intersection of Birthway, uh, Birthview Avenue and Sea Lion Place in the Point Doom neighborhood. Uh, next slide. The project includes a new antenna atop a new utility pole with an overall height of 28 feet, uh, and electrical support equipment attached to the pole below the antenna and three in-ground, uh, handhole boxes. Uh, next slide. There are, um, uh, these are elevations showing the proposed antenna mounted at the top of the, uh, proposed utility pole. And, uh, it also shows the pole-mounted equipment. Uh, the antenna and pole-mounted equipment uh, would be conditioned to be painted a dark brown, uh, color to match the wood utility pole. Uh, next slide. The existing coverage map shows that the Point Doom area, um, uh, with no too weak, uh, wireless coverage except near, uh, Pacific Coast Highway where there are existing facilities that provide coverage to, um, Pacific Coast Highway and immediately surrounding area. Uh, the magenta area on the coverage map, uh, means, uh, port to, uh, no signal. Uh, since these maps were prepared, two other facilities in Point Doom have been approved and will help cover uh, the gap in coverage in the Point Doom neighborhood. Next slide. The proposed, uh, so the last, uh, slide we just saw was existing coverage. This shows the proposed coverage. Uh, the proposed coverage, uh, uh, shows the two existing facilities uh, that were recently approved as well as the proposed facility, uh, at the bottom, uh, left-hand side of the Point Doom area. Uh, the, the green shows, uh, good coverage. Um, and again, the magenta is low coverage with these three facilities, uh, it would appear that the, uh, majority of the Point Doom area would be covered, uh, and there would be, uh, cellphone coverage. Um, uh, next slide. The applicant provided an alternative site analysis which evaluated six other site locations for the proposed facility and determined the proposed site is the most suitable, uh, considering compatibility with adjacent development, uh, lack of co-location opportunities and reduced, um, view impacts. Next slide. The applicant provided three photo simulations, um, showing existing conditions and what the facility will look like if, uh, approved as proposed. Uh, this, uh, this one is, uh, one of the three, um, photo simulations that were provided. Uh, this picture, uh, was taken from, uh, Sea Lion Place looking south, and the other two, uh, were made available in, as an attachment to the staff report. Uh, next slide. Based on evidence in the record, uh, the proposed project in, uh, is consistent with applicable local, state and federal requirements. Uh, therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission, that's planning commission resolution number 20 dash 72, uh, determine the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and approving the proposed project as condition. And that concludes my presentation. Uh, staff and the applicant, um, are available for questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of staff before we go to the public? Chris?
Uh, just a quick one. Um, Adrian, are you be able to, able to bring up, I think it was slide eight or something? I just had a question about the site when I went out there to visit. Um, trying to see exactly what slide, but. Yeah, that one. Um, uh, just across the street, that, that other, the existing telephone pole on, um, hmm, I guess that's Bervue, um, but whichever it is, is there, is there already a, um, a cell antenna on there? One of those boxes? Yeah. So why are we choosing? Well, anyway, okay, so that was my first question. We'll get into the rest in the, uh, public comment. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go to the public, open the public hearing.
Disclosures?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. It's getting too late. Uh, disclosures.
Well, I'll just make the same, I have the same conversation with Ryan Embry that I talked about referencing the, the last one.
Yeah, great.
Just walk around.
Walked around, Chris?
I had the conversation with Ryan and then as just asked, I noted that other, uh, antenna just across the street caught my attention.
Uh, I just drove by. No conversation with Ryan. Okay, we can now open the public hearing and, uh, I assume we have the same Verizon team. Uh, you have 15 minutes.
Actually have Rob Cersei that's, uh, listed as the main speaker, but, uh, pretty much the same, uh, other people for questions.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Cersei, you've got 15 minutes with your crew. You can reserve any of that 15 minutes for rebuttal.
And can you, can you explain to us what he does for Verizon? What is his role in this whole Verizon program?
Okay. Can you open his mic? I don't see him. Is he on?
Is he around?
I show his mic is unmuted.
I don't see him on our screen, but maybe I'm wrong.
It's showing as a participant in the list, but maybe just not on your screen.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cersei.
I think I, I got it muted on my screen. Uh.
Can somebody unmute him?
He's got, he's got a couple of things here. I don't know. I, I don't know.
Yeah, it looks like something's happening with his.
Yeah, he's got two. He's dialed in also.
It's weird. I don't see him at all.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Hear you twice.
Oh. That, shoot.
He's got muted again. He's got muted again.
Well, because he was echoing, he had two, he has two lines open, three lines open.
He obviously works for Verizon.
On the phone. There we go.
Can you hear, can you hear us now?
I can hear you guys.
Okay, you're on.
Yes.
Once again, my name is Rob Cersey and I'm with Full Sang Architecture. And my firm is in charge of working with Verizon's RF engineer to find suitable locations. And part of our direct responsibility is not only finding those locations, but once they've been identified, we do the engineering to attach, in this case, a small cell facility to an existing or proposed structure. So we then also do the entitlement work for them and we're in charge of doing some of the environmental work as well. That's our responsibility. So to kind of give you an idea of what we've gone through and thank staff for their participation with this, this has been a five-year-long arduous project in order for us to look at attaching a small cell for someplace in this vicinity. To give you a background, about five years ago, when all the fires were raging through most of Southern California, a lot of Verizon's customers in the area let it be well-known that I think as one of the commissioners stated, it's very frustrating when you don't have dependable wireless service when you're in a catastrophic event. So Verizon looked at this area and one of the unique features of this peninsula is that when you look at Malibu in general, and if you look at this area in specific, PCH borders the site to the north. The area is also bordered on the west by the beach and also around the south. What we were able to do is look at this area as one enclosed project area. So Verizon's RF engineer came up with a global concept that included, as Adrian stated, the proposal to place three sites to address the dirt and coverage out here. Two of those sites have been approved. One is Zone One, which is north of the site. That's located about at Doom Drive. Doom Drive is actually the apex of the topography in this area. As you move southward from PCH to the coast, the elevation in Point Doom rises about a hundred feet. Because of that topographic or the nature of the topography here, we have to be able to address it with a multi-pronged solution. One site just will not cover this whole area. So Point Doom Zone One again is located on Doom Drive. Zone Three is located to the east and if I could ask you to look at some of the slides we provided in an exhibit earlier, might be helpful in understanding how we're addressing the absence of coverage here. If I could have you go to slide, let's see, why don't we start with slide seven? Think slide seven will show you the location of those three nodes. Two of those nodes have been approved and are in construction or, or soon will be in construction. Zone Two originally was located about five hundred feet to the east. That site, based on our consultation with staff, proved to be problematic. That site, which was actually proposed to be two poles east of the preserve, really presented some challenges for us because the pole we were going to attach to was an over-constructed utility pole and the only way we could attach our small cell to that pole would have been to replace it with a pole that's about ten feet taller. Staff decided that that obviously was not a good solution for us because it would also put the proposed design in the line of sight to the homes on the north side. So we went through that and we worked with RF engineer to come up with a better design solution that would really accommodate our challenge to meet the city standards. So we shifted our, our search range about five hundred feet to the west at the intersection we currently are looking at. We then have about a four criteria box or a category of things that we look at when we're triaging an area to find a viable asset to attach to. First, we look at the city standard. If the city standard is one that presents challenges, we try to design around that. In this case, we're looking for the least intrusive option. That least intrusive option included superior aesthetics. We looked at existing structures and we also looked at a five to six hundred foot separation from any sensitive receptor like a school or a park and we were able to at least accommodate that. The second item that we have to apply when we're looking at potential viable existing candidates to attach to is General Order ninety-five, which is a California Public Utilities Commission regulation. That book of regulations is about six hundred pages in length and primarily it directs us to look at structural integrity. It looks at maintaining climber access to the pole, which means we basically have the pole split into quadrants and one quadrant must also always remain clear for climber safety. We're also required to maintain vertical separation on an existing utility pole. If you look at a typical utility pole, you'll see you've got primary power at the top, you've got secondary power six feet below. Six feet below that, you reach the telecom grade and that's where telecom companies, wireless companies and telephone companies and cable companies are required to place their equipment. As we looked at these, application of these standards, we also had to apply SCE's construction manual. It's more restrictive in some elements than the GEO ninety-five regulations, so we had to incorporate that into our review as well. And fourth, and this is one that I want to point out in particular because it relates to our ability to co-locate on wood utility poles in the right of way when there's already an existing carrier there. And I see that has also been brought up just by Commissioner Chris, I'm sorry, I didn't write your last name down. But you brought up a very salient point where we have an existing structure that's immediately south of the structure that we're proposing to place. If I could have you move to the next slide. If we look at slide nine, that shows you the alternatives that we looked at. In this case, we looked at six different alternatives. If you could move to slide ten, you'll see alternative one, which is an existing utility pole that's about thirty feet away from the adjacent residence. It's about, I'd say sixty feet from where we're proposing to place our pole. That pole from an engineering standpoint is definitely constructable. We could place a small cell on that with some rearrangement and in the worst case, I might have to elevate that pole, replace it with one that's ten additional feet in height. Alternate two, that's the one the commissioner identified. That site, which is directly across the street or across the intersection from our proposed location, is a Crown Castle Strand Mount facility. It's a unique situation that they are able to do because they've got plant that they can attach a pole or a, an antenna on, on a utility pole. But the ten-foot vertical separation, that's kind of a industry standard for separating against, or separating away from existing facilities so that you don't have cross interference or interference from both propagating sources would require us to extend this pole an additional ten feet in height and more than likely, one pole on either, either side of it would also have to be raised. This pole has primary, secondary, and it's very overbuilt and you've got telecommunications that are attached to this pole going north and south and east and west. So from our standpoint, that is an overbuilt structure and was disqualified for that reason. If I could go to slide eleven. Alternative three is very similar in case. This site is an existing utility pole with primary, secondary, and it's got house drops. It's also got guides that are pole-to-pole guides which helps stabilize the pole and it has an existing, I think it's a sprint facility on it. In order to attach to this site, we need to raise the pole an additional ten feet and locate above that site to minimize the signal interference. Again, that site was rejected. Number four, this site is actually a node that's located or a utility pole that's located about a hundred and thirty feet to the north of our proposed site and it is on Sea Lion. That's the first lot adjacent to our proposed location. This site from an engineering standpoint is constructable. We could do some rims on here to accommodate our attachment. However, this utility pole is directly in front of the main entrance to the single-family residence. Based on the criteria in the city's municipal code, that site too was disqualified from aesthetic standpoint. If I could go to slide twelve. Alternate five would have been proposed to place a new utility pole at this location just to the left of the entrance to this home. This site was rejected because as you can tell, along that frontage, there are no existing utilities and no overhead infrastructure. This pole, regardless of whether we'd put a wood pole in or a steel pole or anything else, would have stood out and created an unacceptable aesthetic at this location. Alternative six is a pole that's thrown to the west on the south side of Burrview Avenue. This pole was rejected, as you can tell, because it's overbuilt with existing utilities. It would not accommodate our attachment because we would have to go at a grade that would be lower than eighteen feet over the roadway. And additionally, this site has no access for the technicians to access our equipment if it were to be placed on this site. As that, that site too was rejected as an unacceptable solution. Now, what I'd like to bring up is the fact that this is a unique situation where we had the opportunity to propose to place a utility pole and existing overhead leaves. Our utility pole would not be attached to power and because it's not attached to power, we had a unique opportunity to place our antenna not on an extension arm over the right of way, but within a canister. That canister is a twenty-four inch diameter concealed unit that helps us to secrete our equipment with a shroud below and that shroud also helps hide some of the cabling work that goes here. So we felt this to be definitely a superior, least intrusive option for our proposed project. Also, I wanted to mention that we did have a conversation with a couple of residents who submitted comments to the city staff during the comment period. I think at the conclusion of my dialogue with them, they had very salient questions. They asked me for information I was able to provide to them and in subsequent conversations, I think we were able to at least mollify their concern. I wouldn't necessarily say they were in favor of this, but they were definitely not opposed to this thing. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and I would like to prefer any time we have left over to respond to any public comments or questions.
Okay, how much time does he have left?
We have two minutes and twenty-five seconds.
Okay, great. Who's next?
We have a member of the public, Lonnie Gordon.
Okay, Lonnie, you're on.
May I give my time first to Nicole McGinley and then I'll come on after her? Is that okay?
No, we can't give away time on.
She could.
No, it'll be just trading time.
Just reorder the time.
Yeah, reordering it.
So you want Nicole to go first?
Yes.
Okay, I could do that. Nicole? You unmute her? There we go.
Unmuted?
You're unmuted, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I wanted to address, I, I looked through this report quite thoroughly and I wanted to address a couple safety issues that came up. Number one, on the pole that they're suggesting, it's a class three pole, which is the lowest quality. And I would at least ask that at this intersection, it should be a class four pole. It'll be more structurally sound. Another thing that I, I noticed in here is the RF safety program. So I'd like to ask Verizon that they, Verizon must demonstrate that all, that they have identified all workers that do not work for Verizon that may need to access this restricted zone because of, you know, if they were to work on the pole for any reason or if there were tree work nearby or if the other utilities need to work up high. So Verizon must demonstrate that they provided an RF safety plan to those above identified parties that include actual procedures to lock out and tag out the site or suitable means to control hazardous energy that OSHA would approve. So those are the two safety issues that I found when I was looking at this. I mean, really, for me, when this first came on my radar, the concept of sixty-three feet from a home, while it's not something that we can fight for because we're not allowed to oppose something from the SEC because of safety, I can't help but as a fellow neighbor to not be alarmed and feel concerned for those residents. I, I want to go back to that slide number eight that the Verizon gentleman was speaking to, or excuse me, it wasn't for Verizon, but representing this project. And when he talked about zone three, the, the third one, so the one up on Doom and then the third one that's already been approved down on, it's on Fern Hill. I've gone over to that site there. That's right across the street from the school and I don't think that that was up for approval for you guys, but it is my understanding that it is up for a public hearing even though it's been approved because it's on a residence and I don't remember getting anything about that. So I would like to understand more about that third site that is a part of this cluster. Because being across the street from the school is my greatest concern, which is the exposure that this would give to our children and that's why we have this five hundred foot setback. And I, I don't understand how this gap of coverage could override that very important safety feature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lonnie Gordon? Can you unmute her? There you go.
Thank you. Hi, hello again. I'd like to go back to one of the things that was said before about the electricity being off or not having communications during our power outage. We happened to stay during the fire too and that was a concern until T-Mobile brought in some of their portable units and we could actually communicate. But if the power is out, that means that any of these utilities will be out. Verizon will be out. They'll all be out. Maybe the generator that they're building in at the bottom of it in the right of way will help, but I'm not sure about that. There are so many issues to discuss here. I would really like to bring up the ordinance that Malibu for Safe Tech and, and many of the residents of Malibu have provided to the city council. And we have also, in addition to that, provided a, an electrical engineering company and ordinance writing company to be consultants. The, I'm sorry to say, I know Dr. Kramer's on here, but the consultants that we have currently seem to be more telecom prone than they are residential and community prone and I consider part of the industry to be against us. I made a few notes here and I'm trying to look at them. Ron Cersey. I can't even read my notes anymore. Sorry. It's getting late for me too. Undergrounding should be, and as I noted in our ordinance, that's what we prefer. If we can underground and one of these projects, that's the way we should go. So I'm a little tired, so I'll finish now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen, who's next?
We have Ryan Embry.
Okay, Ryan?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I served as a public safety commissioner for this city for something like six or seven years and before I chaired the telecommunications commission. And the first thing that jumped out at me about the proposed pole is that it's a wooden pole. And there's, there's really no reason why a pole should be a wooden pole. It doesn't have high-power electricity on it because because a smaller diameter steel pole, for instance, or aluminum, um fiberglass or whatever alternate material exists would have much less visual impact for the pole itself. And number two is the location of the pole is really not um, well, I would say a safe location for proximity to a vehicular intersection. That um a wooden pole, the second reason you wouldn't put one in near an intersection is it's not a breakaway pole. It's not designed for for highway standards that if it if there's a car accident that the pole breaks off, goes up over the car and and doesn't chop the car in half. That um, those are safety issues that really are overriding for this proposed location. So the type of materials is very important. The structural integrity of the pole is one thing, but uh only considering a wooden pole, it's gonna be twenty inches in diameter if it's a class four or whatever. It isn't the the protocol. The setback from the corner, I think, is important. If it's uh, it is a dead-end uh street intersection there. It's a three-way for one. Um, I think it would be probably as effective if the pole was not at the intersection, if it was pulled back up uh to Sea Lion another thirty, forty feet, if it actually has to be at this location. The undergrounding of equipment is paramount. It's in the code. And this is the second application, and there's been four other ones from Verizon that just totally ignores the code. If this was in Orange County where Verizon has its, you know, corporate offices for this uh company, it'd be underground. There'd be no questions. It's in our code and the application does not comply with the code. It should have been uh refused at the counter. There should be a variance for the above grade, and that's not properly noticed for this hearing. The twenty-eight feet ought to be plenty of height for that area. And a pole can be painted uh camouflage. It can be acid washed to look old or wooden. That's been evidenced on Malibu Canyon Road by Edison poles that went in that were metal. And that was determined to be structurally um superior and fire resistant, another safety issue.
Uh, I'd like to let you know that the three minutes are have expired.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'd like to hear the battery backup for this one too.
Okay, who's next?
That is the last public speaker. We have uh rebuttal of um of the two, correct.
Okay, uh, can you unmute Mr. Cersei and see if there's any rebuttal?
Uh, yes, Chairman.
By the way, we'll ask questions also.
Yes, sir. Uh, by the way, I do have Bill Hemmett on here if you have any questions regarding RF uh exposure. But I would like to at least very quickly touch on a couple of things, and I'll start from the back and go forward. Uh, Mr. Embry is absolutely correct that we proposed a wood utility pole here simply because the existing uh utilities in the area are all wood. You don't have any steel streetlights, and so we thought that steel would stand out and not be a uniform material. Um, we were trying to find a material that would integrate into the built environment. But we could absolutely put any type of a, I shouldn't say any, we can put a steel pole, we can put a a concrete pole, we can put a steel-wrapped concrete pole with a different face on it. So those options are available to us and we would be more than happy to to pursue those. And actually, on these, the project you're talking about on Malibu Canyon, I actually worked on that project along with Edison in the county of Los Angeles to come up with that matina finish on those. So again, that is an option that we could look at if that would help integrate this seamlessly into the neighborhood. Um, as it relates to um a wood pole versus a smaller foundation on a different type of structure, that may not necessarily be it. Um, as far as the class four pole, that's all done by a structural wind load analysis. And so that's what's determined what the safety factor is, and that's how we choose the type of pole or the class of pole that we use. Um, as far as undergrounding, uh, we are actually not, we're not proposing any above-ground elements. There's no battery backup and we're proposing to place three handholds for power and for fiber across the street. So there are no above-ground uh or at-grade facilities proposed as a part of this. So I think that addresses the comments that I largely heard, but I'll turn this over to Bill Hemmett if he has any comments or you want to have any questions for him.
Okay, can we uh unmute him?
Thank you. I think I'm unmuted. Um, I just wanted to address the question about uh that um uh Ms. McGinley raised about the RF safety training program. And this would apply for any workers that had access to the antennas on the pole. Um, and that's going to be because this is uh, the the pole would be a standalone pole just for Verizon's facility. That would be only Verizon's workers. Uh, tree trimmers are far enough away that it's not an issue. Uh, they're not gonna be uh at levels equal to the public uh exposure limit, much less the occupational limit. So the training program is fully sufficient the way it's proposed. There's no need to include training for other workers because they can't get up near the antennas. That's only for Verizon workers on its own pole.
Okay, uh, how do we stand on time?
Time has expired for.
Okay, great. I'm gonna close the public hearing and go to the uh council for questions. Chris? Chris?
Yeah, sorry. Um, just one quick one. Um, according to our code, if I'm right, just I just want to see if maybe Adrian can ad- address this. Uh seventeen dot four six dot one two talks about location specific to um cell towers. And um, in that language, it says that we cannot have any new cell tower within four hundred and fifty feet from any other existing wireless facility within any residential zone district. But the testimony was there's one across the street, another one hundred feet down the street. How did we, how do those two reconcile?
Um, I think if you keep reading that section, um, there is a allowance uh for uh locating uh the wireless facility within the four hundred and fifty-foot uh separation when um it can be demonstrated uh that from a technical perspective, um, there is um, you know, co-location is not feasible and there's um, you know, there's a a need for the facility.
And then touching on co-location, I know in the discussion um by the applicant team, there was talk about having to uh extend the pole heights up to, you know, ten feet above existing. But there was also a statement that said we need a ten-foot separation, so don't we really, wouldn't we really only need to have extended the existing poles about three to five feet, not a full ten feet? I just wondered if um the applicant team could could address that apparent inconsistency or if I misinterpreted the photos that they were shared. I think slide ten would have been the best um illustration what I'm talking about.
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner. Um, we need a a horizontal and vertical separation of ten feet from tip to bottom of the adjacent structure. So a three-foot increase in height would not help us. Um, and again, the site directly across the street is uh pretty over-constructed with existing utility lines going east and west and north and south. It also has pole-to-pole guys on that structure. So we would have to increase that height a minimum of ten feet in order to accommodate that horizontal and vertical separation. And then we would have to look as whether or not we could still provide the appropriate climbing space. And I think at that site, it's impaired as well. So there are a lot of constraints to developing a co-location on that utility pole.
Can we bring up, I just want to make sure I understand how you're talking about the separation. Is it possible to bring up slide ten? Um, whoever's kind of got the clicker? Um, just because I I I'm, so so it's basically not only got to be ten feet above it, but also ten feet sticking out on an arm kind of away from it. So you almost have to put it.
Correct.
Um, yeah.
Correct. We would def- we would definitely have to put it on an extension arm because when you have power above you, GO ninety-five takes that as well as SCE's uh construction standards. They require that we have to maintain climbing space, which means at a minimum, I have to put a six-foot extension arm. That means that's extension arm extends out toward the street and I would have to put a pair of panel antennas on that structure. So it would be ten feet above and ten feet away in a radial distance from that existing star- that existing facility.
It would be like fourteen total feet away diagonally, whatever. Okay, since in all these sites, you had the same issue where you just couldn't get the equipment to fit. And there's no um, is there any, do do does, do you as um a co-location applicant have the right to request of the existing hardware? Because like if I look at alternative two, he's not on those those horizontal poles. He's just got one antenna in the middle there. Um, could he drop his to accommodate or something? I'm just, you know, obviously trying to figure out how we just don't, you know, throw another pole up here if there's any other way. I'm sure you've you've thought about it, but just um.
Sure.
Any other way to work with that? Yeah.
I I wish, well, I'm sure Verizon and Sun instances wish that they could do this. The only time I can do a strand-mount facility is when I have, and excuse the term of art, but it's called plant. I have to have some type of a pole-to-pole fixture or a utility line. In this case, it would be fiber in order for me to place my facility on that plant. Otherwise, I have to locate on the face of that pole. I can't tell another carrier to move your facility. We would have to ask and they would have to accommodate that. And I can't speak to what Crown Castle's engineers would do as far as and and they could ask, could they rotate antenna a hundred and ninety degrees from? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, just just. Well, well, like, I don't know if you listened to our last discussion, but what we arrived at was a request to try to work with some local, uh, sorry, some local, um, you know, businesses, what have you, to see if 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 uh they could accommodate Verizon's hardware on the roof. I I mean, if we haven't talked to these other providers and the law doesn't prohibit that discussion and, you know, technically your teams could look at it as the alternative two and say, hey, we got everything there. We just need to get the separation figured out. Um, I mean, if it's feasible but needs negotiation, I'd rather hear we're doing some negotiation to not clutter up the 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 corner right across from this, you know? So I just don't know how hard that's been explored or tried.
I'm sure I would also offer this. I would also offer this, that we, if we were looking at locating on alternative two, I would more than likely have to change that pole out regardless for a taller pole. You've got uh existing infrastructure on that pole that would really preclude us from being able to locate below. You'd have to go above. Um, but I will say this, alternative one with some rearrangement, I could locate on that pole. The whole reason that we selected not to locate on alternative one or alternative four was because of the proximity to the existing residential units that backed onto those facilities.
Which are even closer than the proposed. Is that correct?
Would be even closer.
Sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, can I ask a question real quick of Richard? Would, if they wanted to make some other utility move their equipment, that utility'd have to come in and get an amendment, wouldn't it?
So was that a question for Richard or for me?
Yeah, for Richard. Well, for you, whoever. Adrian or Richard? Yeah, Adrian. But then would, if if Verizon wanted Sprint to move their equipment, Sprint would have to come into you and get a permit, right?
Um, that's correct. So they would both have to come in uh and, well, the other thing that I keep in mind is that uh everyone's fighting uh to be as tall as they possibly can for coverage. So asking another carrier to move their antenna lower is probably something that they're not gonna be amenable to.
Okay, thanks. Are you done, Chris?
Um, I'll I'll come, I'll follow up.
Okay, Jeff?
I I'm I'm gonna go back to what we we talked about in the last time. I I'm I'm just guessing here, but uh it appears that as the power and the capacity of these networks grows larger, the 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 um the distance that individual cells can cover seems to be decreasing. And so you need more and more of these cells in order to be able to provide the same level of coverage with the same uh capacity and and bandwidth and so forth. Is that, is that? Well, if that's true, then the question i- that that we've talked about in the last hearing seems to be relevant here too. How many more, yeah, what's Verizon's plan within the next six months, a year, a year and a half for filling in the Point Doom area with additional sites and additional uh coverage? And that seems to me to be something that would be relevant to our decision in terms of the aesthetics of uh of of what's going on here. And I'd just say, just in passing, before I forget it, um, uh, just say it once. Both as to this application and the previous application, one of the questions that I think we have to answer is whether there is substantial evidence in the record supporting the application. And in terms of the gaps in coverage or the the density of coverage in in this case, I don't see substantial evidence in the record. As Steve pointed out earlier on, there's some pretty pictures, uh, but they uh they have no foundation. There, nobody says, there's no engineer who says this uh is the, you know, based upon our studies, this is what it shows. It's just a picture. And i- if I've missed something in the in the uh staff reports, I'm sorry, but that's the way I read it is just, it's, they're just out there with with no professional foundation in in spite of them. So when, at least when the first one comes back, uh, I just, I just lay it out there for Verizon to 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 take it or leave it. But but at least in my opinion, there's no foundation for, and no and and no foundation means no substantial evidence uh on the issue of of gaps in coverage. And I'll turn it over to somebody else.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions of Mr. Cersei. Um, one, Ms. McGinley uh talked about a class three or a class four pole. Uh, what is the difference between the two? How much was sturdy is it three and a four? And I know you've done your study, but is there any real difference on as far as strength between those two? I don't know how many classes there are.
Oh, absolutely. There's a difference in strength, and that's why you have the classes. But to put a class four in, it'd be a larger pole or a larger diameter pole. And it would be definitely, it would possess more in uh structural integrity. And we would not be adverse to doing that. We can over-engineer a site. That that's not a problem. It's, you run into a problem when you under-engineer a site.
Okay.
So we can be more.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, then, um, now you mentioned you could put a metal pole and I uh I guess this is more a comment than a question, but Point Doom has special provisions in the gen- in the general code about, the general plan about being more rural than somewhere else. For example, sidewalks are are banned. Um, so I I do not see the reason for uh putting a steel pole in and industrializing the place. Um, now, you, okay, you answered the question on uh the safety issues and I know this isn't pertinent to this issue, but why was or do you know why the Fern Hill site was right across from a school when you make an issue of it just not being near a school?
It it's, it's not right in front of the school. It's uh, I think in excess of one hundred feet away from the property line. We looked at a site closer to the school, um, realized how close in proximity we were, and we moved that site further away. So it's a significant distance away from the school. It is not right in front of it.
Okay, and uh the the reason for not having a generator is this is just like any other small cell site and basically most of them don't have it?
It is. It it again, um, I would think to maintain the rural character of the site, this would probably not be a good candidate for placing an above-grade cabinet someplace in this area. You don't have sidewalks. You have rolled curbs. It definitely has a rustic rural environmental feel to it, so I, it just probably wouldn't work as well here as in a, as as in an urban environment.
Okay, uh, thank you. I got a question of probably Richard. Um, I know speed humps are going in on Doom and Fern Hill, and I understand that in January council's gonna consider the petition for speed humps on Burgview. Do you know anything about that?
I would have to look at, at the council agenda to confirm that for you.
Okay. Or is it, uh, Public Works against the petitions or you get?
The Public Works Department would definitely start there as a capital project, but they to date haven't filed a, a permit with us.
Okay, um, does anybody else have any other questions, Steve?
Yeah, uh, and, and this is to Rob also. Rob, this is a, a 4G site. Is that not correct?
Can somebody unmute him?
That is correct, uh, Commissioner. This is, uh, 4G site.
What would it take it to turn it to a 5G site?
I'm not an RF engineer and I really can't answer that question. I'd have to defer to Verizon.
Is there anybody from Verizon can answer that question here tonight?
Daisy is on.
Daisy.
Commissioner, um, thank you for the question. Um, there are different ways, uh, depending on what the type of 5G, um, that we're planning to install. And at this time, this area is not, um, slated for that, although there is a, you know, that's something that, um, Verizon wants to consider in the future.
Yeah, they can't answer the question.
The question was what, what?
What, what do you have to do converter from 4G to 5G?
So again, sir, it depends on the type of equipment that we have on there and what is the plan for the future? I don't know what type of equipment we'd have at the time when we decide. Um, if that's something we decide to do in the future for this location, so. It's not something that I have the answer at this point because I don't know what we're going to be or, or even when. Um, this particular location is going to be slated for, uh, 5G.
Okay, and, and to go back to the question that I think Jeff asked, which I think is exactly right. I mean, if you look over the horizon a little bit, have you got it, is, has, uh. Have you guys put together a plan that says these are the additional. Stations we need to have on Point Doom?
So for Point Doom, um, as mentioned by Rob earlier and also by staff, we have the three locations, right? So we have this location and we have the two other locations that were approved. Um, in addition to that, uh, we are proposing currently a macro location that's already with staff for review. Um, and that macro location is pretty much at least for the immediate moment. Um, granted, like I said earlier, the network is the lead, living, breathing ecosystem. But for the immediate future, that's the only other, um, proposed, uh, project in this location.
And when you say immediate, what's the immediate future to you? A year, two years?
Yeah, these are just projections and I am, you know, I, I cannot speak, I, I, I don't have a crystal ball, so to speak, but probably I would say. Two to three and that's very, very general.
For two to three years, you're only going to get one more, one more tower put on Point Doom.
And it's not necessarily a tower. We're proposing a rooftop installation. Um, and, uh, that's going to be a macro, which is very different than the small cells that have been proposed.
So you're doing a rooftop op installation. That's cool. Okay. Rob, do you want to know any more about that? In terms of what the future looks like, guys?
Commissioner, I had to, to, to punch in to get, uh, access to talk. I, I have to concur with Daisy. I think that, um. The macro cell, um, for this immediate area is all we have slated, um. I know that they were looking at maybe one additional site, if I am not mistaken from RF. And I'm not sure what the ultimate decision will be on that site.
It's just one right now and like. You're asking the future. This is the one that we have already been working on actively with staff. And, um, as the employee for Verizon, that's what I can provide you.
Okay, whenever the motion gets made, I just want, I'm going to include a section in the motion. That says if they convert this to a 5G site, they have to come back to the planning commission to get approval before they can do that. You can't do it automatically.
Well, can we ask, uh, our expert, um. Doctor. I don't know if you can still on.
Dr. Jonathan, he's there someplace, yeah?
Yes, I'm, I'm here and, and. Let me, uh, let me do a couple of things first because I think that there's some misinformation here, which I want to correct. So the, the commission makes the best decisions. Uh, number one, um. There is actually the radio equipment that is going to be on the pole. It's, it's in one of the enclosures on the pole. And that was the same type of equipment that was on the ground in the previous, uh, uh, case. Um, as for the RF safety issue. Uh, because the other utilities are crossing on this pole. Uh, General Order 95 Rule 94 kicks in. And provides state level guidance as to RF safety. And as for that, this project will comply. And specifically to address a question from. Uh, Nicole McGinn, McGinley about, uh, that. Uh, Verizon is proposing a cutoff switch, uh, for this site as is required by GEO 95. So in that respect, uh, they are going to be compliant. And finally, for Ms. Gordon, before I talk about a little bit more. Um, we only work for local governments and landlords. We don't work for the wireless industry. The guidance that I'm providing to you is based on, on that. Um, getting to the issue of 5G versus 4G. The basis for saying that they would have to come back if they want to upgrade the site to 5G. Is probably suspect and probably not viable. Uh, the issue, however, that is within your scope to require as a condition is that. Uh, if they change the emissions and increase them. Uh, the FCC has determined that. Reading the, the, the Telecom Act of 1996, we're allowed as a city to determine whether a proposed project will comply with the FCC rules. So to the extent that there is a change, whether it's. 4G to adding more equipment or 4G to 5G. The basis for your query should be based on RF safety. Which is a generally applicable safety code within the city's review. So that's how, if you're interested in. Making sure that the emissions are compliant, frankly, you shouldn't, you shouldn't care if they're 4G or 5G or whatever G. That's not within our purview, but RF safety is.
So how would you word that condition then?
If the applicant wishes to. Well, first off, if, if an applicant wants to replace the equipment that's permitted, they do it under a process called 6409. That's, that's the section of the law. And that would require them to come into the city with an application. And that application would then require them to disclose what it is that they're doing. So if they want to change the radios. Which by the way is all that would be required. Um, the question was how hard would it be for them to flip to 5G? It would be changing the radios that are inside the proposed cabinet to be bolted to the side of the pole.
Right.
Um, so. Uh. If they did that. And that would actually take them out of compliance with the current permit, that would actually trigger a potential, uh, uh, code enforcement. But, but the right way to do it is if they want to change the radios. We want to know as a city, do, do the new radios comply with the FCC rules as to RF exposure and also to GEO 95, which. Probably will be fine. So that's the basis to do it. Base, base it on a, a material change in the equipment. And the emissions and, and you're much more likely to have a successful. Outcome, uh, rather than saying just if you go to 5G, come in for a permit, that's, that's probably very suspect and. I suspect your city attorney would be uncomfortable with that too.
Patrick, have you got the language to do what we just talked about that he just gave us? Can you put, if we do the motion, can you figure that out?
Yeah, I, I, I believe so. And then, and then, and then of course I'll, you know. If it is, it is incorrect, I, I, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll.
Excellent, thank you.
Dr. Kramer, uh. The equipment that they're strapping on the side of the pole in the previous application. They said they, they had to have it on the street. Is there any reason why that same equipment can't be strapped to the side of the pole of the Cross Creek? Um. Installation.
Well, uh, and again, since that one's going to come back to you later, I, I can tell you that. There are many examples of doing exactly what you've said, which is to strap an enclosure to the side now. That would require working with Edison to see if they will permit it. And I'm not sure if they will, but if they do, then. From a, has it been done before, uh, viewpoint? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I just want Richard to note that when it comes back.
Um, I think that the equipment that you're talking about was the battery backup. And the battery backup is not something that's part of this project. I, I thought.
No, 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 no. They were going to put the radios in the ground and they told us, oh gee, if we. If we, uh, if we put them in the ground, it's going to screw up the signal. And nothing to do with, you know, the battery's battery, electricity is electricity.
Well, let's, let's just do, there, there are actually three levels here. There is underground. Which they prefer not to do because of the increased cost and, and maintenance issues. There is at ground level, which is what is proposed now for Cross Creek. And then there is on the side of the pole, which is proposed in this project. So the battery backup. Um, uh. There are examples of them being placed on, on, uh, wood poles all over Southern California. But again, what you're, I, I think one of the goals is to minimize the visibility. And, uh. Well, it's an aesthetic issue.
Yeah, it's, but it's also to minimize interference with the street. So I just want Richard to think about that when they come back. Um, okay, uh.
Chris, Chris Martin.
Questions, Chris?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so just, uh, I'm trying to kind of figure out which are the most relevant. I, in looking at some of your, um, your, the diagrams provided for kind of the power output, uh, there was a. Illustration labeled elevation simulation and signage plan. Um, it shows that the power rating out, you know, kind of in a, a circle. At the, kind of within plus or minus, you know, five feet above and below the, the actual, um, antenna. And then it kind of goes out radially from that. Um, when we look at how close these, these units are to a given residence. Do we take into effect where that beam is going to be or that, that plane is going to intersect with a structure? Or is it just strictly where is the pole stuck in the ground? Um, in terms of, uh, when we're trying to evaluate impact to, uh, 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 uh. The distance from that neighboring structure. Cause what I'm trying to lock in on is Mr. Cersei said that, you know, uh, uh, uh. Option number two looked really good, but it was even closer to the nearest residence. But I'm curious if that, if the topography falls off kind of fast, we might be 20 feet higher relative to the residence. And therefore even further, especially with where that power spectrum sits. Relative to where the proposed location is and we wouldn't add a pole. So I just want to understand how that, you know, math is calculated to say what's the distance to a residence.
Who do you want to answer your question?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Cersei was, was speaking to it before. And let me know if that question makes sense.
Had his hand up.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Want to ask him?
Commissioner, I really think this is a, uh, Bill Hemmett, uh, question. And I think he's definitely going to answer that more accurately than I can.
Okay, he has his hand up, so let's open up his mic.
Uh, thank you. I'll put my hand, okay, my hand goes down too. Um, the answer to the question is that, uh, we take into account the width of the beam of energy. It's focused out toward the horizon. The antennas are not point sources. They're, they're 10, uh, inches wide, but they're two feet tall. And that allows the energy to be focused down out toward the horizon. Uh, very little goes downward toward the, uh, toward the, the ground or toward the buildings. So that's taken into account with the calculations for, uh, for how much exposure levels there, there, there are. At this building, uh, that's 63 feet away or at any other building. We take into account the height of the building. As well as of course the height of the antenna and how those two interact is what, uh, keeps the levels low. I think we mentioned at an earlier part of the hearing tonight about the, wanting to get the antenna up above. Uh, other buildings so that it has a, a clean view of the areas trying to serve. And that height difference is what keeps the levels below the limit at the nearby homes.
And, and, uh, since it sounds like you're the, 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 the kind of most aware of this. Um, another question I had was on the face simulation that you showed in the illustration where bird view intersection with sea lion. It looks like there are three primary nodes of energy coming off a kind of, you know, off a triangle, equilateral triangle. Going straight towards the residence. Um, i- is that kind of a norm? Is it just to cover the signal? Or is it normal that you would kind of tweak that to drop the energy field hitting that residence? Or is that, is that plane of energy running over the residence? And I just don't have a 3D view of this to kind of get where, what's kind of, kind of what the real orientation is relative to the house.
Sure, uh, let me just say first that this is not my product. Um, this was, uh, done by another consultant that, uh, was filed, uh, originally with the application. We did an independent assessment. Uh, we treat the antenna as being omnidirectional. That is what, it, it doesn't really matter which way you, you orient it. We assume the maximum power is happening in every direction. So it's not susceptible to, to orientation. They can install it anywhere they want and it'll still comply. Um, the, the key is that the, the, what's shown there in the green doesn't reach the house.
Right.
63 feet from the house. And so whatever that area is out from the antenna. Where the workers would shut the, the facility off if they were to go up and work on the antenna. Um, the distance out there does not reach any trees, any houses, any other poles, any, anything. So that's why the, the compliance is assured.
And that 1%, what's the threshold? The 20% threshold or the 1% is the threshold for exposure?
They, they use units of occupational limits and in those units, 20% is the public limit.
Okay.
So you're just looking at the blue area is as far as it goes. They, for whatever reason, wanted to show some other level, but it's not pertinent to compliance. So the, the blue area is the area that exceeds the public limit and the yellow is the area that exceeds the occupational limit.
Okay, and then, sorry, the last question, I think we'll go back to Mr. Cersei and that's, um. You, you had stated earlier, you know, the topography, the point is such that, you know, you have to deal with it. I'm guessing if, if all things being equal, you would want to put pretty much all the equipment at the highest point, you know, at the end, you know, at the, at the actual headlands there. Um, obviously you can't do that, but again, I did notice a pole, um, just before the, the, the park opens up there as you're coming up. Um, uh, Birdview and it kind of bends to the left. Was that pole evaluated? Cause it seems like it would be higher than anything else you looked at. And so, you know. Could it have coverage? Again, I'm just trying to find that one pole. We don't need that a second one. And so not to kind of, you know, beat this too hard, but, but, uh, were, were poles kind of further off at a higher elevation? Assessed for both the ability to place hardware and their coverage, um, you know, uh, you know, patterns.
Uh, Commissioner, so are you talking about, uh, the area down by the preserve?
Yeah, exactly. Just at the border on the, um, what's that? The, kind of the. West, uh, yeah, the west side.
Okay, the reason that we really tried to stay as far away from there is. The municipal code definitely discourages us from being near parks and vital resources. Um, when we reevaluated the project, we moved everything 500 feet away from there towards the west. So that we could maximize that different, or that distance. So a- and this round, we did not evaluate that. I would have to go out, it's been five years since we looked at, at that area, 500 feet to the east down by the preserve. I would have to look at it and see what we looked at at that time, but we were really disincentivized. To continue looking in that direction. That's why we, we moved here. And if I also might address one thing. We don't always need the highest, uh, point. Um, early in the, the development of wireless networks, height and coverage was definitely the optimum thing that we looked for. As networks have begun to mature and we're densifying our networks, height can also create. Um, interference, I think, as Mr. Kramer brought up earlier. So we definitely need to, to tread lightly when we're looking at those elevations. Um, and I have to work very closely with RF engineer for him to direct us and what is and is not acceptable as it relates to height.
Well, and I, what, what I'll, what I'll call out to the commissioners, cause I'm, I'm just kind of, you know, seeing what I can see on imagery and, um. There's a pole right at the edge of the park, which has an existing wireless antenna sitting on the same damn pole. So, and, but it seems to be notably taller than others. Um, I don't know, you know, it would be putting something near a park, but we'd not be putting in another pole. There's already existing antenna near the park. So it's like. Do we either add a new pole that doesn't, that isn't already there or could we evaluate an additional site? I just wanted to float it out there because.
Chris, I, I, this, it's, we've been at this an hour and 10 minutes. It's 20 minutes after 11. If you've got a motion to make, uh, I gotta urge you to make it, cause otherwise I'm expecting.
If you've got a motion to make, uh, I gotta urge you to make it because otherwise I'm expecting that or there might be a power failure in my office and I might have to, uh.
Yeah, I hear you.
Uh, well, I, I'll entertain a motion. I just have one last question. It's very simple. Either, uh, Hemet, Nedison, or Cersei can answer. When we evaluate a brand new house, do we now start having to need to look and see where all these RF things are around it? So we don't put the house in some place where it's getting blasted? And is that something new that cities are doing?
Um, not, not in this case would it be necessary because as we saw from looking at the antenna face simulation on, uh, the report you have, uh, the, the energy does not travel into, uh, it does not encroach in any of the building setbacks that, that are, are required in, in the city. So.
Okay, okay. That's the answer. If they, if it does, then the staff has to look at safety if there's a pole nearby, right?
Well, it's, it's the obligation, it's the obligation of the carrier to comply with the federal standard at all times. So if, uh, you were to approve, uh, I'm speculating, if you were to, uh, approve, uh, of construction that was in an area that was that close to a pole, uh, then they would have to modify their facility.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Let's close the public hearing. I just want to make one comment before we get a motion. Uh, Jeff mentioned coverage and, uh, for years I've been called by people on Point Doom. What service do I use? Because they all suck. Okay. To be succinct, there is no good coverage on Point Doom by anybody. But okay, is there a motion? Okay. Uh, you don't have one, Jeff? You don't have one, Steve? I'll make one. I move to approve the, the, uh, staff's recommendation with the addition that if there's a material, a material change in, uh, well, my brain has got emissions in the future.
Is this the, yeah.
The language that we asked you to do.
Sure. Sure. And so it's, here's what I have. So, so Commissioner Euring, please, you know, interrupt if I'm wrong. Should any change to the project or facilities result in a change of RF emissions? Applicant may demonstrate compliance with all applicable federal, state and local laws.
So demonstrate to who? To us?
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the only thing that I'm concerned about with that, that should the law change to such a degree that that's no longer applicable?
My only question is, we've had problems in the past putting something in a resolution that we have no idea who's going to check it and whether it's ever going to be checked. So we usually put in a provision, if they do change that. You gotta come back. At least notify us or, uh, or get us to approve it. Does that make sense?
So, so then I, I guess we can add to the end of that, to the satisfaction of the planning commission?
Okay. Does anybody else have any other things? Do I have a second?
I'll give you a second. I'll give you a second.
Any comments? Okay. Let's call the question and take a vote. And by the way, I wanted to thank the audience for staying up like we do in the wee hours and all their contributions to this discussion since we're learning it like you are. Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
No.
Motion carries?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes.
I'm in favor.
Everybody, yes. Jeff, you yes?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's, uh, everybody said yes. Okay. Good night, gentlemen.
Adios, guys. It was a pleasure.